Good evening, everyone. I'll call to order the Arvada City Council for July 17th, 2017. Call upon Mr. Jones this evening.
Good evening. If you would please join me in a moment of silent reflection. Now if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kristin Rush, do you want to call or roll?
Here.
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 Councilmember Allard.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember McGough.
Here.
Okay, we have no minutes that we need to approve, so we'll move on to petitions, recognitions, communications. I'll call upon again Councilmember David Jones.
Thank you very much. Majestic View Park and Nature Center is participating on behalf of the City of Arvada in the National Wildlife Foundation's Mayor's Monarch Pledge. This national initiative encourages municipalities to provide much-needed habitat for the declining population of the monarch butterfly, an iconic insect that has decreased in population by over 90 percent in the last 20 years. To begin this challenge, Mayor Mark Williams signed the pledge on November 30th, 2016. Then the staff at the Nature Center selected 11 actions to be accomplished throughout 2017. Completing eight of those actions will allow Arvada to be part of the leadership circle. However, three fulfilled actions within one year of signing the pledge will satisfy our commitment. These actions include public outreach, landscape maintenance practice changes, public events, milkweed plant giveaways, and/or creating monarch habitats at schools and city properties. With the efforts guided by the National Wildlife Foundation, taken by Majestic View Nature Center, and supported by the City of Arvada, we can set an example for members of our community and other municipalities to endeavor to restore the population of the beloved butterfly. We recognize these efforts in proclaiming that the City of Arvada has taken the Mayor's Monarch Pledge in the year 2017. If I could ask the representatives from the Majestic View Park and Nature Center to come to the podium, and I'll read the proclamation, come down and present it to you, and then if you'd like to say a few words, that would be great. Wherefore, the monarch butterfly is an iconic North American species whose majestic migration has fascinated scientists and thrilled nature lovers for generations. And whereas, the health of local pollinators is essential for the security of our food source, the longevity of many agricultural industries, and the beauty of our landscape, and the sustainability of the ecosystem. And whereas, the population of the monarch butterfly has declined by a dramatic 90 percent over the course of the last two decades, largely due to the devastating loss of milkweed, its host plant. And whereas, citizens of Arvada have the ability to contribute to the survival and growth of the monarch butterfly population by planting and maintaining essential milkweed plants and nectar-rich habitats. And whereas, Majestic View Park and Nature Center is participating on behalf of the City of Arvada in the National Wildlife Foundation's Mayor's Monarch Pledge, undertaking actions in 2017 to boost the floundering population of monarch butterflies and support other local pollinator species. And whereas, Arvada, Colorado is fortunate enough to be at the edge of one of the major migration paths of the monarch butterfly, and typically sees butterflies grace our gardens and wildflowers in the late summer. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and the City Council of the City of Arvada, Colorado, that September 2nd, 2017, be designated Mayor's Monarch Pledge Day dated this 17th day of July, 2017, signed by the mayor and all members of council. I'll come down now.
Well, thank you, Mayor and City Council. I want to introduce myself. I'm Karen Miller. I'm the Director of Majestic View Nature Center, Arvada's Environmental Education Center, and this is Charlotte Sandcooler. She's our Environmental Education Specialist.
Thank you so much. On behalf of the staff and volunteers at Majestic View Nature Center, I'd like to thank Mayor Mark Williams and Arvada City Council for proclaiming September 2nd Mayor's Monarch Pledge Day. With your support, we've taken the National Wildlife Federation's Mayor's Monarch Pledge, dedicating ourselves to provide much-needed habitat for the declining population of the monarch butterfly, an iconic insect that has decreased in population by 90 percent in 20 years. We've been busy accomplishing this goal over the last seven months. In fact, we've already achieved eight actions out of the 11 that we intend to do. We've been giving away hundreds of hand-sorted milkweed seeds, and I have brought some today that we will leave up near the water pitcher. Anybody who wants to take some, we encourage you to plant some milkweed. We've been producing monarch informational videos, we've been hosting educational programs, teaching the public about the issue at different community events, and of course, planting milkweed at parks and schools in Arvada. Through these efforts, we hope that Arvada can inspire its residents and other municipalities to do their part to save the monarch butterfly and other pollinators from the endangered species list. So, thank you all again, and we invite you all to our Monarch Warrior Workshop at the Nature Center on September 2nd.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. September 2nd. Okay, next we have public comment, and I'd like to welcome Jason Glass. Mr. Glass.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council and staff, citizens of Arvada. You'll be relieved to find out that I'm neither here to complain nor ask for anything from you.
Yet.
Yeah. Right. Thank you for the clarification. Just to introduce myself, I'm Jason Glass. I'm the new superintendent for Jeffco Public Schools, and I just wanted to come by and say hi and express my gratitude for all that you and the City of Arvada do in making this a great place to live and a great place to raise a family, not just for people that live here within the city limits of Arvada, but for everyone in the metro area and everyone in Jeffco. I also want to pledge to you that going forward, I'll absolutely work to keep Jeffco Public Schools positioned as a great partner to you, so your problems are our problems, and we want to work together to make this a great place for kids and families to continue to grow up. And if there are ever any things that we can get better at, or that I need to know, or that Jeffco Public Schools can do to support you, please never hesitate to reach out. Just wanted to say hi and thank you.
Well, Jason, welcome to our community and to all of Jeffco. We're pleased that you're on board, and you've got a great background in what you've done in the past, and we expect great things. One of the things that we do value here in Arvada is our partnerships, and you probably have already heard that we have a coordinating committee where we'll have two city council members meet with two of your school board members, and we think that's a very productive way to address upcoming concerns, issues, joint problem solving, and then, you know, our folks bring it back to the full council, and I know your school board takes it to the full school board and staff for consideration. So, we value that. We've got many great kids that have gone up through Jefferson County Schools. We've got some absolutely incredible schools here in Arvada, and we wish you the best to come.
Thanks so much.
Thanks for being here. Next, I'll call upon Bob Lovridge, since he's already commandeered the camera down here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. I too am not here to complain about anything, but...
Well, that's new.
No, you know that isn't true.
That's true.
I'm here to just give information on the Firefighters Car Fest coming October 6th, August 6th. Getting my dates wrong here. I'll straighten that up a little bit for you. The Firefighters Car Fest is a car fest that is honoring those that serve, and we're going to have a lot of neat things happening this year. For our first year, last year, we had 125 cars, and we expect that number to grow immensely. So, there's going to be a lot of beautiful cars. But besides that, we're going to have antique fire engines. We're going to have historical military vehicles there. We'll have Arvada's two historical fire engines that we have there, and they are both running now, which is really cool, even the 1923 Dodge, which was an original piece in Arvada. We will have the Sheriff's Department there with some of their unusual vehicles. Around 10:30, just so you know, we will be presenting the colors. The Arvada Pipe and Drum Band, along with the Arvada Fire Honor Guard, will present the colors, after which the American Legion will be doing a gun salute. And yes, we have notified PD that that will be taking place. And then shortly after that, Flight for Life will be landing. And then several times during the day, the Pipe and Drum Band will be performing. This is a benefit for the foundation of the Arvada Fire, as friends of Arvada Fire. This foundation helps support many of our community outreach programs, such as the smoke detector replacement. Just so if people don't know, you can call the fire department. We will come out and check your fire or your smoke detectors, make sure they're working properly, and if need be, we'll replace them. And this is a free service to our citizens. Besides that, we have helmets for kids, we have car seats for people who need them, and this is a fundraiser that helps those types of activities come from the foundation. We also, that day, will be having a school supply drive. Station 1 in Old Town has a backpack program that helps kids in that area get the school supplies that they need. Last year, they were running short, so this year, we have a drive going. Anyone can bring school supplies, and if you do, then you get an opportunity to be in a drawing for a ride in a fire engine for your kids to school. So, great opportunity there. I mean, who wouldn't like to see their kids go to school in a fire engine someday? Bob, you had that opportunity, didn't you? That's great. So, we encourage everyone to bring out supplies that day. It is free to the spectators, and of course, if you've got a wonderful car, that you've got a story behind that you like to show off, we certainly encourage you to enter it and show it, and we will be very pleased if you do so. But we thank you for your time, and appreciate the city's great support on this. Your staff has been marvelous in helping us make this happen.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Thanks for what you and the fire department do on our behalf. I'll next call upon Chris Ainskoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. With council's permission, I'd like to use a demonstrative during my testimony.
You may.
I'm here today, and I'm joined by a number of people who I'd like to ask to stand quietly in support of the request that we have for city council. I'm also not here to complain, but I am here to ask for your help. That does not show up very well.
If you hold it at a slight angle, you might get some of the glare off of it. There you go.
We would like city council to commission a study from the engineering and perhaps the police department to look at ways to mitigate impacts between motorists and equestrians, particularly in the western part of the city. To respect council's time, I'm the only one who's going to speak on this tonight, but you can see the number of people who are here in support of this cause. There are a few symbols that are more iconic in the American West than a rider on her horse. This horse here is named Mister, ridden by Stephanie, who's right there. Mister was unfortunately tragically killed on Saturday in an accident with a car at 7900 Block of Alkire Street. That part of Arvada, as Arvada becomes more and more urbanized, you see the horse properties that are in the western part of the state or city primarily now of being surrounded by houses and things like that. So, I'm asking for the city council's help, not for one of these boil-the-ocean problems that you're unable to do anything about, but for something that we can do that's meaningful and limited in scope, and something that you can in fact do. So, Mister here was being prepared, as he was being prepared to go to a horse show at one of Arvada's equestrian centers on Sunday, yesterday. He was struck and killed, and tragically so. The stretch of road that he was killed on is Alkire Street between 80th and 72nd. That stretch of road is home to Van Arsdale Elementary, a youth sports field, it's a route for a local fire station, and also for Boston Valley High School. There are numerous horse properties along that stretch of road, and that stretch of road is, in many cases, bordered by unincorporated Jeffco, but the road itself is part of the city. So, what we would like to ask is, again, for the city to commission a study by the traffic engineering department, perhaps the police department, who has records of enforcement actions along that stretch of road, to look at ways to mitigate these impacts. My daughter, who's also here in the audience, rides in the western part of the state or the western part of the city several times a week. I'm actually surprised that it's taken this long for a tragedy like this to occur, and I don't think anybody wants to see those happen again. So, with that, I will end my testimony, but thank you.
Thank you. Very good. And I think, did Sharon Penut wish to speak as well?
Yes.
Hopefully, I didn't...
That's fine, huh? Italian.
Let you pronounce it correctly for me.
Pezuto.
Pezuto.
Mayor, council, thank you for hosting us. I represent the Arvada Area Horsemen's Association. Several members are in the group. Most of this incident was given to me secondhand, and it's unfortunate it happened. I live on Indiana and 76th. I have horses. Just in my block, there are over 36 horses, and so we do have a huge horse community here in Arvada, and we want to stay here. We want our trails to connect so we're safe. We want drivers to be considerate, but we also do not want to be negligent in the care of our horses or the way we drive our vehicles. That's not my question tonight. Tonight, I'd like to know, if you can help me, the responsibility of the first responders. Who are they, what they can and cannot do when livestock animals are in such dire injury they need to be shot? Who does that? Who has the authority? Who doesn't? If the police department doesn't have it, why don't they? They're usually the most present immediately after an accident. The fire department comes in quickly. I'm not sure of the timing on this accident. I wasn't in town, but I have seen other accidents similar. I have a situation that occurred a few years ago at my property in which a bucking bull, a prized bucking bull, got loose out of Red Staple Farm north of 80th and Indiana, and he traversed the land around Lyden and Candellas now, and he ended up towards the Indiana Equestrian Park. He crossed Indiana, and people were gathering with their guns and with their trucks. He went down into the ditch bank. He eventually jumped the fence and got into my horse pasture, which I thought, wow, that's kind of neat, but kind of scary. So, I got my horses to the back, and he started to settle. And during that time, there were about 15 police cars, people with shotguns coming out. The crowd was intense, and I said, I'm sorry, folks, nobody's shooting this animal on my land. And I was going to deal with how to handle him at a later point, but the crowd was frightening. And the animal did eventually jump over my fence, crossed 76th, and he was shot many, many, many times. And that was by our police officers, so I don't know what the current status is of our help forces. We do have them in place, but what can they do, what can they not do, and who should we turn to? What is the protocol we animal owners should follow so that we are handling the situation, this animal's not causing another accident, like bleeding to death on our highways? So, that's my question.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh-huh. You're welcome.
So, I thank you both for speaking. You know, obviously, it's a tragic incident. I'm sorry for the loss of your horse. I know that there's a bond between horse owners and their horses that is very, very We'll direct our staff to look into this matter further in terms of protocols, and also in terms of whether or not we should be looking at either changes to traffic enforcement or control devices or whatever. I've got your information, so someone from staff will be getting back in touch with you, and I'm sure that our city manager will be having conversations with the police chief as well in terms of both traffic issues and protocols, in terms of how these types of incidences are handled. You know, one of the things that makes Arvada so special is the fact that we have a horse community. You know, as someone who lives on the west side, certainly, you know, I appreciate the horse properties and seeing the horses and having knowledge that our city has been good stewards of promoting that with the equine center and other ways that we've done it with our trail system and everything. So, as with many things, it's figuring out a way that we can all coexist in a good fashion. So, we'll be getting back to you with more information, but we appreciate you all being here, showing your support, and let's see what we can do towards working for a workable solution for everybody.
Thank you.
Okay? Mr. Devon, does that give you what you need? Okay, very good. Does anybody else wish to address city council at this time that didn't sign up? Okay, very good. Thank you all for being here on that, and I'm sorry again for the reason that you're here. Next, I'll move on to new business. We have just one item on the consent agenda, which is a resolution authorizing the Second Amendment to an agreement between Arvada and R&amp;L Design, increasing by an additional amount not to exceed $50,000 for architectural services related to the Old Town Arvada Phase 1 Parking Site Improvement Plan. Do I have a motion? Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that consent item number R-17-02 be approved.
Motion's for approval of the one consent item we had tonight? All votes are cast. That consent agenda item is approved unanimously. Next, we have a resolution 17073, which is a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between Arvada, Boulder, County of Boulder, City and County of Broomfield, County of Jefferson, and City of Westminster for evaluating and funding of a Rocky Mountain Greenway Trail radionucleide soil sampling and analysis plan. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As the council, you may recall that back in May of 2016, the council unanimously approved a resolution to partner with Jefferson County Open Space in support of a federal lands access program, or FLAP, grant to fund planning, design, and construction of a trail crossing into the, which would be for the Rocky Mountain Greenway Trail and providing access into the Rocky Flats National Wildlife Refuge. Prior to further design and as a condition of the resolution that you approved, there would also be an environmental sampling and analysis that would be completed in order to understand the potential impacts as a result of, you know, soil sampling and concerns regarding potential contamination of that area, in that this would be done on behalf of the project partners by Jefferson County Open Space. You may also recall that back on May 22nd of this year, we had a workshop which gave you an update regarding the Rocky Mountain Greenway Trail, and other information associated with that, and I think also provided you with some information for this endeavor, which we're under consideration tonight. Just to remind you, the city's equitable share is about 22.5 percent, or about $22,500 for the estimated $100,000 soil sampling and analysis plan cost. This expenditure is in addition to the FLAP grant, which at this time is estimated to cost approximately $145,000. We have not budgeted any city funds at this time because we don't know if the FLAP grant is going to be successful. If this action is approved tonight, then we would work on providing $22,500 in order to fund the cost of the study. We are recommending approval of this resolution.
Okay. Council questions or action? Mr. Marriott.
There are no other questions. I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. McGough has a question, and then you can make the motion, Mr. Marriott.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's not a question, I just want to speak to the motion.
Well, why don't you wait until the motion is made?
Oh, I'm sorry. I am ahead of myself. Go ahead, to the motion.
I move that R-17-073, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of Arvada, City of Boulder, County of Boulder, City and County of Broomfield, County of Jefferson, and the City of Westminster for evaluation and funding of a Rocky Mountain Greenway Trail radionucleide soil sampling and analysis plan be approved.
Motion's for approval. Mr. McGough, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you. I know that this, there has been some contention concerning our participation in this project over the last year or so. I'd like to just speak to the motion as the city's representative to the Rocky Flats Stewardship Council, where I meet with representatives of the neighboring communities about five times each year to receive information concerning the refuge itself. I'd like to just say that it is, I would urge support for the motion. There is consensus that the site is safe. That consensus comes from the Environmental Protection Agency, the Department of Energy, and the Colorado Department of Public Health and the Environment. And that consensus is based on air, water, and soil samples over the past couple of decades at thousands of locations on site, yielding probably in the millions of data Accompanying this motion is the information that the Wildlife, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has agreed, as we've made it conditional. They have agreed to additional soil sampling at the request of the local governments. So, I think that we are, and our community, will be well-served by the eventual opening of this trail and the approval of this motion this evening.
Very good. Mr. Allard.
Mr. Devon, down through the years, there's always been a difference of opinion about the, many, many times, the samples have been taken. Do you, as a person or organization that's going to sample that's already been selected? And if so, how do you meet the criticism that, oh, that guy doesn't know what he's talking about?
Well, the organization has not been submitted, selected. In fact, I believe there is an RFP process that is, that is being implemented at this time. The, you know, how we refute that? I think that's a good question because it's been something that's been debated since about 1995 or so, when the cleanup was completed. What I would say to the council and say to the public is that experts in public health and safety will be involved in this selection process. There's an endeavor to pick the very best consultant we can, who will conduct the most thorough study that we can. There will be lots of eyes watching that. In addition to what Councilmember McGough just talked about, the agencies that are part of the Rocky Mountain Greenway Trail collaboration will be watching this very closely. And this is something that was desired by all the partners. It, I think, was sort of brought forward by the City of Boulder, but all of us that are associated with the Rocky Mountain Greenway Trail want to make sure that this study is conducted in the most thorough manner possible in order to identify any concerns or issues that we might have to mitigate, or in fact, if it's not able to, if we're not able to put the trail through, then we'll have to come to that reckoning, or whatever the information shows is what we're interested in finding out.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion is for approval. Everyone can vote. All votes cast. That passes 7 to 0. Thank you. Next, we have R-17074, a resolution authorizing the submission by the City of Arvada of a Great Outdoors Colorado Inspire Grant for the Fitz Morris Park and Fitz Morris Elementary School as part of the Be Wild Jeffco Initiative. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, our Parks Golf and Hospitality staff, and their never-ending... and their never-ending quest to give us the, provide us with the best opportunities available to people in our community has come forward with this grant application for Great Outdoors Colorado, or GOCO, which requires the resolution approved by the governing body of our organization, which is the city council. This would be a program that would address what's described as three pillars to collectively promote participation in outdoor activities. This would include places, the physical environment, programs, the curriculum, and events available to activate the environment, and pathways, which is opportunities for greater learning by older teens and other children in terms of internships and careers in the environmental field. Fitzmorris Park was selected as a hub for a lot of different reasons, including the fact that there will be significant public investment at Fitzmorris Park and Elementary School through the work that Apex is doing with the, through their bond program, and also the fact that we're contributing about $3 million to help build a recreation center and pool facility that will serve that neighborhood. The implementation funding tiers address the various program elements. There's three different tiers, which include a half million dollars, $750,000, and $1 million. And if we are fortunate enough to receive that grant, then we'll have to identify matching funding, which we have set aside from the fund balance in our Parks Fund, which is, thanks to the very good economy, is doing very well. So if we were able to receive this grant, then we would have to come back to the city council and request funding for the matching, matching amount. If you have any specific questions about the grant, both Gordon Rusick and Sarah are here from our Parks Golf and Hospitality Department. They can talk to you about, answer any questions you might have.
Very good. Questions or action? Mr. Marriott.
I'll start with a motion. I move that R-17-074, a resolution authorizing the submission by the City of Arvada of a Great Outdoors Colorado Inspire Grant for the Fitzmorris Park and Fitzmorris Elementary School as part of the Be Wild Jeffco Initiative be approved. And I'd like to make just a comment about this motion. I think we have a great, unique opportunity with the Fitzmorris Park School and soon-to-be Neighborhood Recreation Center coming to that site. And I would encourage everybody to vote affirmatively on this motion, as it'll give us the ability to do more there than we're even doing, which is a lot. Thank you.
Motion's for approval. All votes are cast. And we've got a groundbreaking for the project on August the 2nd, which is going to be an exciting day. All votes cast, and it passes seven to zero. Thank you. Okay, next, we have ordinances on first reading. Mr. Mayor, pro temp.
Yeah, I move that Council Bill 17-021, an ordinance annexing certain land into the City of Arvada, Trinity Storage, Annexation Number 1, 15350, State Highway 72. Also, Council Bill 17-022, an ordinance annexing certain land into the City of Arvada, Trinity Storage, Annex Number 2, 15350, State Highway 72, as well as, I was going to say Senate Bill, Council Bill 17-023, an ordinance rezoning certain lands within the City of Arvada, Trinity Storage, from Jefferson County SR-2 Suburban Residential to City of Arvada, PUDBP, Planned Unit Development Business Professional, and amending the official zoning maps of the City of Arvada, Colorado, 15350, State Highway 72. All be set for public hearing on August 7, 2017 at 6:30 p.m.
And approved on first reading.
And approved on first reading.
Motion's for approval on first reading. All votes cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Next, we have presentation of the 2016 CFFR and external audit. Mr. Devon?
We'll have Director of Finance, Brian Archer, lead this item off.
Mayor Johnson, thank you for the opportunity to present the CAFR and our 2016 audit. I do want to take just a moment to formally say thank you to Lisa Yagi and Deb Nielsen and the rest of the finance staff for their hard work over this past year. We have some exciting news, and I would like to ask Ms. Jody Kates, Managing Director of BKD, our external auditing firm, to come up and give a real quick presentation.
Very good. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Brian, and Honorable Mayor, and city council members. I appreciate the opportunity to come and present very good audit results. I reported to the audit committee just a little bit prior to this meeting in much more detail to have a brief summary for the council. Just first, to lay out the scope of our audit, we audited the city's comprehensive annual financial report, or CAFR, which is this beautiful bound document that you may have seen. We also audited the federal funds, perform an audit under uniform guidance of federal funding that the city gets. We audited the Arvada Urban Renewal Authority and Rolston House, all as of the year ended 12/31/2016. In addition to that, we were asked to audit the Arvada Center and the Food Services Fund as of June 30, 2016, which is the date of transition to legally separate not-for-profit status. And that was in order to comply with requests made by the SCFD, the Scientific and Cultural Facilities District, which provides funding to the Arvada Center. So that's kind of the scope of what we did. I'm happy to report that all of these audits received clean, unmodified opinions. So really, the city received straight A's across the board, and that is the first A that they received. In addition to that, we had no audit adjustments that we proposed that we asked the city to record, or that we said were not material enough to record. That is also an A-plus across the board. We had no single audit findings related to federal compliance or internal control issues, another A-plus, and we had no management letter comments to report formally in writing, which is another A-plus. As, just a little background, as the audit goes along, that doesn't mean that everything goes perfectly, but we have developed a very good relationship with Brian and his team. And as things come up, we are able to deal with them very proactively and work through them, and sometimes they are fixable on the spot. And as long as we don't foresee that continuing to be an issue, we consider a verbal comment sufficient and move on down the road. So we're happy to report that that was the case this year. Also happy to report that the finding we reported last year, we considered completely implemented. So the city is able to maintain their low-risk auditee status for single audit purposes, which reduces the amount of testing of federal funding that we're required to do, and ultimately results in saving the city money. As the more programs we have to test, the more money it costs the city. So also, very good. Just kind of touching on some of the more significant issues that we dealt with during the audit, and again, we have such a good relationship with the finance staff that most of these issues are brought to our attention and dealt with way before we begin the audit in April. So when the, Arvada Center began transitioning, we were working with Deb through what that would look like and what those entries would look like. I know that city council has had significant conversations about that transition as well, and many of those carried over into the audit. The other probably highest topic of the audit was the transit hub and some of that, that funding through RTD, and was it federal, was it not federal, and those conversations. So those are two of the highlights of the audit. But otherwise, it was really a very smooth, very clean, very normal audit, and we greatly appreciate the cooperation that we get from the staff, and have a lot of confidence in their abilities and that they will bring us into the loop when issues arise that need our attention. Are there, I'm happy to answer any questions?
Any questions from council? Mr. Marriott?
No, I have not really a question, but just a comment. You know, much like the city does with its financial policies and giving us a terrific bond rating, also, our city does a terrific job with our accounting and reporting and auditing process, giving us an incredibly low risk of our audit rating as well. These are all things that help the citizens by making our government more efficient, just cost less. And so I want to compliment the city's financial staff, as well as the city's management, for taking these policies and taking them seriously and creating, you know, a top-flight organization in these respects, because it makes a difference for each and every one of us. So I want to say thank you.
Very good. Mr. McGough?
Yes, thank you. Yes, I got a chance to review a little bit, primarily the narrative, not the numbers. But I wanted to commend Mr. Archer for a really informative, yet succinct, transmittal letter, which is lots of, lots of good information and in a very readable and usable form. Thank you.
And I would encourage you, if you read nothing else in the document, the transmittal letter is very informative, as well as the management's discussion and analysis provides a very good synopsis and condensed financial information.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Don't see any? Mr. Archer, anything else you need to add?
No, thank you.
Very good. Good news.
Thank you.
We like those A pluses.
Yes.
Okay, next, I will open the public hearing on Council Bill 17020, an ordinance enacting Article 3, Fire Restrictions or Bans of Chapter 42, Fire Prevention and Protection of the Arvada City Code, and Establishing Penalties for Violation Thereof. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is something that we worked on with the Arvada Fire Protection District, as they requested us to put in place an ordinance that would authorize city officials to more effectively respond to extreme fire conditions. As a result, our Community Resilience Coordinator, Nessa James, who's here, if you have any questions, worked very closely with Arvada Fire to craft an ordinance that authorizes the city manager, or his or her designee, to declare fire restrictions in effect for the city during extremes of, extreme fire danger. This would be implemented as either a Stage 1 fire restriction or a Stage 2 fire ban. And there's various, what this ordinance does is it codifies what a Stage 1 fire restrictions and Stage 2 fire ban is. The, if you adopt this ordinance, then Arvada Peace Officers would be responsible for enforcement, and we will be training officers in order to enforce on these provisions. This ordinance, use of this ordinance is completely dependent on future climate and atmospheric conditions, which we cannot predict, but which we need to be prepared for. And if we do declare a Stage 1 fire restriction or a Stage 2 fire ban, then the police department will work closely with the city attorney's office and the Fire Protection District to ensure that the ordinance is enforced in ways that protect the public safety and so forth, as well as individual rights. If you have any specific questions about the ordinance, Nessa is here to, would be happy to answer them. The city attorney's office is represented as well. We are recommending approval of the ordinance and see, we view this as a public safety kind of issue, very important to our community.
Very good. Is there any member of the public that would like to address city council on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open up for city council questions or action. Mr. McGough?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I have a question for city manager Devon. I'm wondering, since I had a question concerning the person who can authorize the city, or authorize the restrictions, it's the city manager or designee, and I'm wondering, we always have somebody who's acting in the role of city manager. So will it, will it, do you envision it being the city manager or the acting city manager at any given time, rather than delegated to another level?
Yes, it would be the city manager or my absence, city manager's absence, one of the deputy city managers.
Okay. So it will be whomever is in the position of city manager at the time?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
I have a question, and I'll make a motion if there's no other questions. In reading the, in reading the document, I'm, and maybe I'm a little slow, but under liquid or gas-fueled appliances, does that fall under it, or is it excluded? I'm, under definition, Section 42-71, it says liquid or fueled appliances or equipment that burn liquid or gasoline. Is that prohibited under the Phase 2? So like, if I have a gas-powered, or not a gas-powered, but a gas fireplace outside?
So, let me see if I can answer it, and if I can, I'm sure that Norris Dinson, who wrote the ordinance, is going to be able to jump in and save me on this. But based upon the, based upon the ordinance, under the Stage 1 fire restrictions, the reason that that's a defined term is because that's one of the exceptions
Okay.
...to the ban. And then if you go to the Stage 2 fire ban, it's also one of the exceptions under the Stage 2 fire ban as well. And so I think what we're trying to do there is to, is just to say, well, this, this is something that you would be able to do, that therefore it's an exception under both of these.
Okay, and so I read that backwards. Okay, that's why I'm not an attorney. I would have wrote it way more logical.
We're so, we're so lucky that you're...
Okay. So with that, if there are no other questions, I'll make a motion.
You may.
Thank you. I move that Council Bill 17-020, an ordinance enacting Article 3, Fire Restrictions or Bans of Chapter 42, Fire Prevention and Protection of the, of the Arvada City Code, and Establishing Penalties for Violations Thereof be approved upon final reading numbered 4597.
Motion's for approval. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next, I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 17017, an ordinance rezoning certain land within the City of Arvada, Old Town Commons Town Homes, from City of Arvada RM Residential Multifamily to PUDR Planning Unit Development Residential, 23.3 dwelling units per acre, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Arvada, Colorado, 5417, 5421 Allison Street. Same time, we'll consider the Old Town Commons Town Homes preliminary development plan for 5417 and 5421 Allison Street. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we'll have Director of Community Development, Rita McConnell, lead off this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This proposal is a ten compound unit, it's on .43 acres. The current zoning is RM Residential Multifamily District, and this zoning completely surrounds the parcel. The intent statement of RM in the Land Development Code says it especially allows for multifamily units. The comp plan indicates higher-density residential development on this parcel and immediately surrounding it at a density of 12 to 24 dwelling units per acre. These are limited parcels in the city which have both the support of the comprehensive plan and the zoning in place for density that can result in housing diversity. Even less parcels are located so near to commercial services and transit routes which further attract higher-density development. This is one of those parcels that happens to be within a half a mile of the transit-oriented development area, which supports higher-density development, typically 20 dwelling units per acre or more for transit. The rezoning part of this request to PUD will not increase the density above what is allowed in the RM Zone District, but in order to get the density of the RM zoning in this area and to deal with the site-specific constraints, the PUD zoning is required. It will allow for the site layout and the design modifications that help meet the city goals for housing diversity. The modifications requested as part of the preliminary development plan include a 15-foot front setback, which is complementary to setbacks across the street with multifamily development, a reduction of guest parking by one space, which results in a parking requirement of 2.4 spaces per unit versus 2.5 spaces per unit. Transit-oriented development supports parking reductions. On the north property line, elimination of the bulk plane requirement, which is typically required with multifamily adjacent to single family. Staff supports this request because the existing zoning in place to the north is for multifamily. The comp plan designation for the property to the north is also for higher-density residential, as well as the additional mitigation provided by the applicant in response to the planning commission comments. We believe that that is appropriate to modify that bulk plane requirement. And lastly, an increase in the maximum lot coverage to 42%. Planning Commission voted four to three in favor of this request and added a condition that the fence height be increased from six feet to eight feet on the north property line, and this has been accomplished. As a result of the other concerns heard by the same neighbor at the public hearing, the applicant... the applicant is also amending their proposal beyond the planning commission condition. These changes include changing the location of balconies to address privacy concerns, eliminating the modification request for the eight-foot landscape buffer on the northern boundary. The standard buffer will now be applied, lowering the building overall height by six inches and more reductions in height of up to 30 inches in specific strategic locations to provide solar access to the property to the north. Staff finds this proposal in conformance with the comprehensive plan, the transit-oriented development framework plan, and it also supports the City Council's strategic results for diverse housing. Jacob Nich, Nich, Nichels? I know him. Senior Planner and John Faruzi Transportation Planner are in attendance for staff questions. I received the posting log and affidavit of mailing, and they are in order. The applicant, Mr. Ulri, is in attendance to lead the applicant presentation.
Yeah, the posting log and the affidavit will be made part of the record. Will everyone who wishes to testify on this matter, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to give in these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Very good. Applicant, you may proceed with your presentation, then we'll take public comment. The applicant will then be afforded an opportunity of rebuttal or additional information, then we'll open it up for City Council questions.
Hello, my name is Andy Ulri. I live at 600 South Harrison Street in Denver, Colorado. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm actually going to start off with Matt Korn, who represents the ownership group, is going to start off our presentation, and then I will dovetail in on the end of that to talk about some technical issues as long, as well as some issues with respect to the design. Matt Korn?
Thank you. My name is Matt Korn. I live at 5390 East Nichols Drive in Centennial, Colorado. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and members of council. Thank you for allowing us to present our, our project to you. I won't be repetitive of what we just said about the, the zoning and the comprehensive plan, but I did want to start off by addressing why the PUD is the appropriate vehicle to achieve what we want in terms of, of our, of our design and our, and overall project. Our site is subject to a couple of factors that kind of put it in the category of not being a routine development, and I wanted to highlight probably the, the two main ones for us, which are, we had to align the entrance to our property, we had to align the entrance to our property off of Allison Street to face the, the incoming street here, so it kind of creates a, a four-way right there. And we have two major utilities running through the project. We have a water line that runs right through the middle, or will run right through the middle, and we're going to be moving it, but it already runs through the property. And we have a, is it a sewer easement? Sewer that runs through the south of the property. So, we have a couple of factors here that have, that have really impacted the ability to design the site and get the, the project to where it needs to be. And for that reason, we think that the PUD is, is the, the flexibility the PUD provides is the best vehicle to overcome some of those challenges, and still achieve, still achieve a viable product. The product, if we can get the flexibility from the PUD, it still brings a creative design that's compatible with the other neighborhood uses. We think it actually enhances the buildings and, and the area around it, and it, and it definitely falls within the comprehensive plan and supports that, that kind of higher-density use within TOD development. The last thing I want to add before I turn it back over to, to Mr. Ulri is that this project, we, we do plan on governing this project through an HOA, and I just wanted to get that out there now. There's no real place to put that in there, but in terms of enforcing parking and snow removal and items like that, we do plan on having an HOA in place for this project. So right now, I'll turn it back over to, to Andy Ulri.
Thank you. Again, I apologize if I end up being redundant on a few issues that both staff and Matt had said, but I, I think some of those issues are critical to the, the case presented today, and want to make sure that we highlight all of those. The project is a combination of two existing single-family residential properties that lie within a multifamily zone district. The existing zoning is RM Residential Multifamily District, intended to encourage a wide range of housing types and cost, especially multifamily dwellings, to meet the diverse needs of the Arvada housing market. This proposed development fits right in with the desire of the zoning. In addition, the review of City of Arvada's Future Land Use Plan, this area is listed as high-density residential and is within the TOD influence area. The 12, the unit per acre count that we have falls well below what standards would be for high-density. This would be considered a medium-density residential development. Fact that our project lies within a multifamily district, and this site has been designated as high-density by the City of Arvada's Future Land Use Plan, we again feel that it is very appropriate use, use of land. Multiple places throughout the comprehensive plan support this type of project in this area. Goal L3 in the comprehensive plan, encourage development of transit-supportive, higher-density, mixed-use pedestrian-oriented areas. Target redevelopment areas for and promote redevelopment in targeted redevelopment areas, including Old Town Station. I'd like to talk a little bit about the design of the project. The exterior design of the townhomes will complement and enhance the surrounding neighborhood through the form and materials. Each building will be a combination of brick and siding, similar to existing neighborhood buildings. Varying planes along all four faces play with light and shadow to create visual interest and depth on the facades. A mix of roof lines provide exterior variation as well. All sides of the building have their own unique qualities to create four-sided architecture. Parking for the residents will be in the rear and in two-car garages for, for each resident. The setbacks along the north and south provide opportunities for outdoor living spaces such as patios, balconies, and individual yards. Excuse me. What I'd like to address now is some of the concerns that were raised at the planning commission meeting. As staff had mentioned, our plan was approved at planning commission, but there were some various concerns presented by the neighbor, and we didn't want to ignore those concerns. We wanted to see how best we could address some of those, as well as maybe give some comfort that the, the concerns that they have aren't, aren't quite as bad as maybe they think. In addition to that, we've tried to work all along through this process. We started out with, with staff with 10-foot setbacks along the side. The existing zoning allows for five-foot setbacks on a single-story, 10 on a two, three, 15 on a three. The PUD allows for lesser, seven-and-a-half-foot setbacks. And we agreed after our initial neighborhood meeting that 15-foot setbacks was the appropriate setback for, for this project. One of the concerns that was presented by the neighbor at the planning commission meeting was the balconies on the exterior, looking in, people hanging out on the balconies, looking into their backyard. So what we have done is removed all of the balconies from the north side that face the property to the north, and have internalized them, so that all the balconies now are oriented to the interior of our property. That is both- On the building to the north, on the building to the north, the balconies are now oriented towards the center, and the building to the south, the balconies are now oriented to the middle as well. As, as staff had mentioned, there was initial request to, might as well keep this off. There was an initial request to reduce the landscape buffer along the north edge. That would provide the sidewalk being a little closer to the neighboring property, allowing us the opportunity to have a little bit better front yards for the individual residences. That was a concern, and we decided, okay, we will shift the sidewalk, so we now have the eight-foot landscape buffer that is required by the zoning code, and no longer ask for a variance for that request. As mentioned at planning commission, there was a desire to have not a six-foot fence, but an eight-foot fence. We agreed at that time, an eight-foot fence, if, if that is so, if that meets the city code, we have no issue with providing an eight-foot fence along the property line to the north. Another issue that was of concern was shadows, and how the increase in the, or noncompliance with the existing bulk plane requirement, how does that affect our property? And so we conducted a sun study on our site, and these, I gotta move my glasses here. We took a sun study at four different times of day, or four different times of the year. What you see is Memorial Day, start of summer. The, this study on the left shows our proposed development. This study shows how the sun affects if the existing bulk plane is applied. And you can see, based on the height of the sun, and where the angles, there is a negligible difference, and because of the variation in roof line, our project actually provides less shadow than would be allowed by the existing bulk plane. This is today's date. Very similar in the sense that when you look at the extent of the shadow from the bulk plane that projects onto the property to the north, the property to the north is the residence and the garage, and you look at our proposed development, because again, of the height of the sun at this time of year, there is a negligible difference, and I would argue even a lesser difference of what we're proposing than what is allowed by the existing bulk plane. This is Labor Day, the end of summer. And again, you can see the outline of the shadows for the existing bulk plane and the outline of the shadows for our project. A negligible difference, and in most cases, ours is less. The last one that we propose, or that we are showing in the study, is the winter solstice, the shortest day of the year. Our project shows the shadows, the, the sun is at a much lower angle at that time of year. If you had a four-foot fence, the sun would be blocked on the driveway at that time. The, the bulk plane, the house, the height of the structure, none of those would have any greater impact. And as you can see, the impact again is very similar to what the existing bulk plane shows and what our shows, and that is on the longest day of the year. So going back to the summer, protecting the sun for the summer months, for outdoor barbecue, sunbathing, all those kind of great summer activities, our project has no impact versus what would be allowed under the existing code. The last exhibit that I want to show is, you can see the outline of the darker simulated house, and then you can see our project in a lighter scale behind that. The outline of the darker shows the existing footprint that is allowed under a single-family residence on this site as a use by right. You could build three-story residential, up to 35 feet, halfway to the ridge, five feet off of the property line, and would be allowed use by right as a single-family residence. So again, what we are asking for in the relief to the bulk plane is no greater, and actually far less than what could be built in terms of a mass of a structure. The only difference and distinction in classification is one's a single-family and one's a multifamily. And it's very unique to have a zoning code written that way, when you have a multifamily zone district and you have, if, if you had it the other way around, let's say, if somebody bought a vacant piece of land and built a single-family home in a multifamily district, they now have affected how the other two properties next to them can build. And that's kind of a, a strange thing within a zoning code. So what we wanted to do was again, just highlight, this is what is allowed under a single-family residence. You could build a house this large, but you, a multifamily have a much smaller footprint to build within. So in summary, on some of the things again, that we have, even though we had passed at planning commission, had staff support, again, we wanted to acknowledge the neighbors' concerns, feel if there was a way that was not, you know, a detriment to our project, and could we address those. We dropped the primary hip roof 21 inches. Mike, do you have the overall site plan? The, no, the overall elevations, the overall package. Okay. In your packet, you'll see the elevations of this side. The primary hip roof lowered 21 inches from where we were at planning commission to where we are today. The bedroom roofs dropped 27 inches in height. So as staff had mentioned, the highest point dropped six inches, but 90% of the roof lowered across the, across the entire structure. We revised the eight-foot landscape buffer as discussed. We agreed to an eight-foot fence over a six-foot fence. And then I think the one that, to me, and I cannot speak obviously for the neighbor, that seemed of great concern was balconies facing their, their property, and we, which was, was a big issue for us in terms of moving them internally, but felt that we still, it made sense for our project, and was, was a good thing overall to internalize those versus leaving those on the exterior. I, I want to turn it back to Matt, because he has a few closing comments on our presentation. And obviously, we're available for any questions that you may have.
I just wanted to, to wrap up what, what Andy had said, and I guess kind of summarize where we are with the project right now. You, to reiterate, we're, it's already zoned for residential multifamily, and we're not looking to change that. We're looking to stay within the current zoning. We feel the property squares firmly within the comprehensive plan right now, especially within the TOD zone of influence, or area of influence which we fall. The purpose of the PUD, we think, given the restrictions that I highlighted earlier with the utilities, the street access, and the, and also the irregular bulk plane on the one side of the property, that this does fit in with the parameters of what the PUD was designed for, in terms of providing that flexibility that allows us still to achieve the zoning and the comprehensive plan, but to deal with some of these, I guess, oddities on the lot that are really restricting the ability and, to develop the lot, and it's not necessarily a routine development. One thing we have tried to do from the beginning of this project, whether it was the very first neighbor, neighbor meeting we held in the library, whether it was planning commission, or today, was to be cognizant of neighbors' concerns, the neighborhood concerns, planning commission feedback, staff feedback. We feel that we've gone a long way to address those concerns to the extent that we can, and have made changes to the plans that were not required, but we felt that they were in the best interest of the surrounding neighbors and the community, and, and we still feel like we came out with a great project. In our mind, kind of a win-win, but we've definitely been flexible, and we've definitely been listening. Again, and Andy kind of touched on this, and I, and I think the, the exhibit right now that, that's still up on the table, is with what we heard in terms of privacy, or the mass of this imposing, you know, multifamily project next to single-family, impact on, on sunlight and things like that. What we're proposing to build doesn't bring to bear any additional negative elements, especially on the neighboring property to the north, than they are already exposed to if we were to build what is used by right in terms of a single-family house. It's not even the highest and best use of the property, but you can see from the diagram that we can build closer to the lot lines, we can build higher, and you could build, you know, a, a very large patio on that side. So again, we listen to the neighbors, we're not looking to expose them to something that they're not already exposed to in terms of negative impacts. There's always negative impacts when you develop a property. That pretty much sums up our presentation. Again, we ask for your support in approving the project. We think it's a great project, and we, we hope you vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now I'll open it up for public comment. If you'll state your name and your address.
Just one sec. I'm Debbie Bash, and I'm that infamous owner to the north, my husband and I. 5423 Allison. Okay, ready for me to begin?
Yes.
Okay, first of all, I do want to thank the group back behind me. They have been listening, and we do really appreciate the fact that they are moving the decks. That is a big issue to us. That was a huge privacy issue, and so we want to thank them very much for making that concession and doing that. With that said, however, that does not really eliminate some of the other issues that exist with what they are planning to do. Now, I'm not exactly- Now, I'm not exactly sure where they, he got all of his information as far as the shadowing and the house, that gigantic house next to our property that someone could build. Because my understanding is, first of all, there still is maximum lot coverages for all residential. So you couldn't just put a gigantic house on a lot that covered all of the lot from front to back. So that's kind of not really true. Also, we have the bulk plane standard that still applies. And basically, what that means in short is if you have a one-story house, then the house next to it needs to be one-story or set back further. So if they were to build a two-story unit next to our lot line, they would need to be 25 feet back from our lot line. If it was one-story, 15 feet, which is what they're requesting right now. So yes, 15 feet is one of the requirements, but it's a requirement for a one-story building, not a three-story building, a 35-foot high or just shy of that building. So really, they should be having a setback of 35 feet from our lot line because we are a one-story, or residence, and they are a three-story multifamily. I am not against the multifamily designation. It was there when I bought the place, and my husband and I bought the place. However, I am against that we are not following the rules that are in place that keep me protected and the rest of the residents of Arvada protected as we are designing all of these huge, high-density, multifamily units that are going next to our places, okay? So I just wanted to clarify that. I am not against that. It's coming, we're all aware of it. We can see it happening around us, but I think we need to address all of the safety concerns that go along with that. So I have a couple of things that I want to show on that thing if I can.
Just put them there in the middle of the.
Put it in the middle?
Yep. And you'll need to flip it over.
Oh, I will.
And then you may need to hold it at a slight angle so that we.
Now I gotta get the mic. All right, we'll see how good my multitasking is here. Okay, this, just in case, I don't know how many of you have gotten out to look at the location or not, okay? So I just kind of wanted to include this. They keep addressing all of the multifamily that surrounds us, which is true. There is a lot of multifamily around us. However, to the north is all single-family residence. This is right directly across the street from us. This is part of the Water Tower District, I believe is what it's called. They keep referring to the setback being the same as, or inconsistent with this. And that is not really true, as you can see. They say it's less, that the setback was less than 10 feet. As you can see, there's some landscaping, then there's a five-foot sidewalk. You can't really see it, but there's stairs that go down to the street. And then there's parallel parking. Now, I realize the parallel parking is not part of the setback number, but it still is part of the whole that works or doesn't work. So in other words, these units are set far back from the street. They are not right on the street, they are not 15 feet from the frontage of the street like they are saying that they would like to do right now with theirs, okay?
So that I understand your photograph, is that looking to the north or to the east?
That is looking to the east.
To the east.
It is in my front yard, well, I should say, I'm sorry, it is looking to the north. I see what you're saying. I'm across the street, correct?
Right.
The camera is pointed to the north.
Got it.
Yes, okay?
Thank you.
So, and that is a street actually that I'm standing on taking that picture, and that is the street that they are trying to align with, okay? So if that gives you a little bit better reference point.
Thank you very much.
Sure. I just wanted to show some of the other multifamily residents that are surrounding and in the area. One of the things you're going to note here is that there is a lot of space, meaning streets. Everything has streets between it. Nothing is right next to another residence. So no one is right on top of each other. And you're also going to notice a whole lot of parallel parking on the street. And I'm going to address why that is important here in a minute. And just one more, just so we know that I'm not just picking one place. You can't see that one so good. But anyway, all the balconies are looking either interiorly, which is what they're now proposing, so that's awesome, or they're looking over a street. Okay, so we're, I'm just going to do a rundown, just kind of like they did, of the things that are qualifying and are not qualifying. So first of all, 35-feet height on a multifamily residence needs to be 35 feet back from our lot line. Why is that? One of the questions asked at the commission planning meeting was, well, what, what was that put in place for? You know, why was that? So I got to looking on your zoning records and, or zoning requirements and all of that kind of thing. And I will tell you why, in case anyone is wondering. Let me get to the right page, however. All right, I'm not sure where that's at, so we'll cover that one in a minute. I have several pages up here. I'm sure we'll run across it as I go through the different ones. But basically, what it said is, and this was, this was in reference to if someone built taller than a 35-foot building in the city of Arvada, which is not what they are proposing. I understand that. However, the same thing applies because they are building a taller building than what they can in the location that they are in. And basically, it was solar access. One of the reasons that you could not do that was solar access, which we have talked about, they talked about. The other one was privacy. So we have kind of addressed that with the, as far as actual decks and that kind of thing. So that was, that was good. But then it also says that if they're going to build something taller than that, they have to meet all requirements, all other code requirements in the zoning requirements, okay? So in one of, so in other words, the, one of the reasons that they came in with a PUD-R rezoning request instead of a height exemption request was because it's easier to get through. It is easier to get through the process because there is very, they would have to meet all the other criterias, all the setback criterias and everything else if they were getting a height exemption. So I just wanted, and when I find that paperwork, I will let you know the exact things. But those are the ones from memory that are on there. Also, besides the height restriction, which again, I'm not sure where he got his information for the shading, but the important thing is our driveway is literally right next to the lot line. So in the wintertime, what he was showing would be very accurate. There is going to be almost all shade, which means there's no snow melting, there's no ice melting because it's right there, and it's the big, you know, building, okay? And so that is a concern for safety, as far as I am concerned on that. Also, another big concern for us is that 15-foot setback from the road. And I'm really surprised it's not a concern for more people. 15 feet is not very far. And that is, the building is sitting there. And then there's a sidewalk, and then there's the road. Now, the difference between where we live with all of these individual family homes still, we have to back out of our driveways. We don't have roads to go around or garages to make the, you know, the sweep around and come out forward. So everybody along our area, for the most part, backs out of their driveway. And Allison is a super busy street. I don't know if you spent any time on it, but people fly down that road. And in conjunction with that, about five houses up from ours is where the light rail is. So people come around that corner, and obviously, you cannot see them until they make that corner. So imagine someone with a van, or I have an excursion. We're trying to back up, the back of our vehicle is 10 or 15 feet long. And so you're trying to back up out of there. You can hardly see, you can hardly get, you're trying to watch, make sure you get that corner looked at. You've got a street just about straight behind you now, too. You've got apartment buildings right here, condos, whatever they're going to be called, townhomes. You gotta watch, and then down the street, but I can't see down the street very well because the building is 15 feet off the road. So I have a pretty big concern about that as well. Also, the other one that they are not really fulfilling, that they kind of keep brushing over actually, is that they, the maximum lot coverage, they are way off on. So maximum lot coverage, in case anybody needs some clarification, that is the actual footprint of the buildings on the lot. You can only have so much footprint compared to so much free lot space, okay? And so actually, they had stated, and I don't know if it was they or staff, someone, I think it was staff in their report, had stated that the PUD-R zoning required a 35% footprint or max lot coverage, which is kind of true. That is PUD-R zoning straight out. However, they are asking for a PUD-R zoning with multifamily use. When it gets bumped up to the multifamily use, now the max lot coverage is 25%. So we are, they are asking really to be going from 25% up to 42%. That's not a small variance, that's a very large variance. So that is something to consider also. So what I am trying to, in a roundabout way, get to is that basically, they are developing or trying to develop too many units on too small of a square foot of lots. Yes, I am aware that the comprehensive plan is, has high density for our area eventually. And by the way, that is 15 to 20 years down the road, not right now. But we're acting like it's right now. But that's fine. They want the high density eventually, so be it. However, high density for one acre is 12 to 24 units. This square footage of these two units, or two lots put together is a little less than a half acre. So I'm not great at math, but that should mean if they put six units on those two properties, they would still qualify for high density. They are asking for 10. So let's just say they put eight units on instead of the accounted for 10 right now. If designed properly, they could actually probably conform to all of the requirements right now, which is the 25-foot setback on the front instead of getting 15. They would also be able to make a smaller footprint, so they would get a whole lot closer to that 25% or 30% if it was RM zoning. And they would still be considered high density. Now, that doesn't help me at all with my 35-foot building that still isn't set back from my lot line. However, if they chose to lower the units on the north side and do two-story instead of three-story, they'd only have to be 25 feet off the lot line, not 35, which is only 10 more feet than what they're currently asking for. So they have made some concessions, we greatly appreciate that. However, they still can make more changes. And actually, the council, you guys, can request them to make more changes or different changes. You can even request them to have a lower density than what they do. So it's not like there are not other options. And my final thing that I wanted to mention, because I don't know if anybody's aware of this, and quite honestly, I wasn't until fairly recently myself. The properties were first sold in 2015, summer 2015 or maybe towards fall. Unlock Equities were the ones that purchased that property. A year later, or maybe slightly less than that, Redo Development, which are the ones that are the developers back here, purchased those two lots. We were under the, we didn't even know it had sold the first time until we started talking to them. So they informed us, yes, we now own the property, so that was great. And we have been in conversation with them. But then I just found out very recently, they aren't even the ones that own it anymore. Eli, Eli or Eli, I think it's Eli Developments, which is Aaron Grant, who I don't believe is here this evening, are you? Okay, so Aaron Grant actually owns the properties. That has happened like about a year ago, I think that that occurred, or he could tell you exactly when. But we were still led to believe in all of our conversations that Redo Development still own the properties. So it's just, it's just been quite an interesting process here. I feel like sometimes things are hidden that they just don't want you to know. But with that said, I think it's important that we all think of what we want Arvada to be as we go through this process. It's not an easy process, I understand that. But we need to protect the people that are here as well as the people that are coming. We can't let the developers just do what they want because they come, they build, they build nice things hopefully, and then they sell them and they make a lot of money, and then they leave. And all of those that are left to live in Arvada are the ones that live with whatever those results are. So I just want everybody to keep that in mind and, you know, really look at your own zoning laws and maybe make every attempt to follow them because I think a lot of thought and effort were put into them, and they actually are very good zoning laws, they just need to be enforced. Does anybody have any questions for me?
We'll, we'll get through the rest of the testimony, and then if any council member wants to call you up, we will do so. Okay, thank you, Ms. Bash.
Okay, great, thank you.
Now, I allowed Ms. Bash to go on for a fairly lengthy period of time because she is the property directly adjacent. I probably will not allow as lengthy a testimony of others. But Ms. Bash, thank you for, I thought you were well organized and presented well. So other individuals who would like to testify? If you'll state your name and your address, please.
Elena Dorland, 5423 Allison Street. I just wanted to also touch base, well, first of all, thank you to them again for moving those balconies. That was a huge thing. My two main concerns was the privacy for my family as well as the safety. I'm sure you heard my little guy, I have a two-month-old and.
Then well behaved.
Yeah, he's out right now, so he might have been crying otherwise. But my main concern right now is that 15-foot setback off of the street. Like she said, we have big vehicles and it's very hard to see, especially if you have a building there. You can't see through a building. There's trees in the way right now, that's difficult enough for us. So having that building there is definitely difficult. I believe if I was looking at the drawing picture that they had, they also had a tree sitting there that's definitely, I mean, 15 feet off the street for the building and then a tree going right here. Maybe it was a bush, I'm not sure. But if it's a tree, I'm definitely not seeing. And my biggest concern is my little guy is in the back, and that's the part that's going to be in the street first, so.
Now, your property is where?
It's directly north.
Okay, so the same property?
Yes. Yeah. So that's, that's a huge concern for me. You know, as she mentioned, there, there are a number of things that could be changed to fix that. And also, like she said, you know, so we've got trees on this side going north you're trying to look through. People are coming around that corner, they're flying. I also have got the people who are parked parallel here who are moving around. We've got another street here, then we'll have these guys coming out this way, and then people down the street here. As it is, it's already difficult to make sure you're not going to pull out in front of somebody. So I just wanted to reiterate that that's a big concern of mine.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to testify at this time? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Young. I live at 7706 Robinson Way here in Arvada, and I have no skin in this game. Seriously, I do not live in the neighborhood. Here's my concern. Why have rules if you don't enforce them? It is my understanding, there's a rule in the city of Arvada that you are not allowed to rezon a property if you can do the same thing within the existing zoning. And the developer at the planning commission said, "I can do exactly the same thing within the existing RM zoning." And he even implied this evening, were it not for truly only one item, he could do the same thing within the RM zoning. The one item that prevents him from building primarily on the southern side of the property, thereby avoiding all the issues on the north, is the fact that our traffic people demand that the driveway be aligned to the adjoining street. I believe it's West 54th Lane. I can't help but note that it was the same traffic people who refused to align the two portions of West 68th Street when given the opportunity. portions of West 68th Street when given the opportunity. To me, this makes no sense, aligning a driveway to a street. And all it does is force the developer to use the land in a way that is inappropriate for the neighbors and the neighborhood. He can do the same thing within RM zoning as the PUD. So why rezone when it's not necessary and it's not allowed under Colorado's law, under Arvada statutes, according to my understanding? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Anyone else wish to testify?
I'm Lee Scott, 5365 Allison Street. I am currently dealing with the red, the builders at 5360. They've been fantastic. However, the problem I'm running into with this is, in the past 15 years, or more, maybe a little bit longer, the entire east side of Allison was demolished and put up all those skyscrapers, as we all see. The traffic there has increased exponentially since then. We've done nothing for streetlights, stop signs, speed bumps, anything else.
She's got a five-month-old?
Two-month-old? I've got a three-year-old. There's a whole lot of us that have kids on that street. And as, if you go down there, there's just people drag racing. I'm the odd man out in this neighborhood. I've got a two-story house, I've got a huge driveway. I can back out into my driveway and go onto the street without having to back out into the street. So for me, that's a benefit. However, if we put in more townhomes, more condominiums, you're gonna increase those problems. We really need to put streetlights, stop signs, speed bumps, something to help people be able to back out of their driveways. I can't say anything about what their plan's gonna be eventually. I know that the city wants to go PUD for pretty much that entire area and increase Old Town because that's what Old Town's gonna be. But the families that have been there, my house, my wife has owned this property and her family since the 1800s. She doesn't wanna leave. She's getting to that point where she does. And buildings like this and condominiums and even the development that's at 50, just north of 52nd, they're putting 46 units there, I believe. I could be wrong on the number. But all of those are gonna increase our traffic. We aren't, nowhere in this plan is to put in stop signs, stoplights. 54th and Allison would be a phenomenal place for a stoplight. Couple, I mean, that's not even 100 feet away from where this development is. And you can't see north or south at 54th and Allison without getting hit by a car being halfway into that intersection. So if the, if the council approves it and gives them their PUD, which, as they've said, they can do everything in a residential, a good excavator could actually fix the sewer issue and the water issue. They did it over at 5360. A good excavator or excavating company could fix all those issues with it and leave it as a residential multifamily. The solar issue, if you have solar on your house, okay? I have solar in my house. The highest time for us to get our solar is between 11:00 AM and 4:00 PM during the summer. During the, during the winter, it's a little bit later, or it's backwards, as I was. During the summer, it's later because we get more sun in the evening during the summer than we do the winter. So at 4 o'clock in the afternoon, those solar panels that are on these houses, this house, are gonna be useless. So the setback of a 35-foot setback would benefit if, if she has solar. I don't know if she has solar. But those are those things that residential multifamily could benefit from. Put it at, back 35 feet. Put a stop line, put a stop sign, put something there so that people slow down on that street. It's just a drag race. Arvada, Arvada PD has, has a standing invitation at my property to sit up and do radars. They've taken me up on that offer a few times, and I, and I know that they've pulled people over. But it's the drag race, and we don't need that in our, in our town. We've got enough drag racing done on the highways. We don't need it here in Arvada.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Testimony.
Good evening. My name's Julie Marsh. I live at 5429 Zephyr Court. Unfortunately, one of those skyscrapers that you just mentioned, and I've been there 12 years, and I've seen how the neighborhood's been changing. And unfortunately, I am one of the high-density housing people. We have a lot more people in the area. I know the exact corner. I'm multi-units away from it. I turn out that driveway every day. People are coming down Allison Street going 40 miles an hour in a 25 mile an hour zone, despite the fact that the street is so torn up that you need four-wheel drive to get through it when the weather's bad. But I have four-wheel drive, so I'm good. Ultimately, the biggest reason I came today was my concern over parking. I do not, I, I have a two-car garage, I have one car, I'm good. I do have friends who come visit, and as it is currently in the Water Tower Village area, there's not a lot of parking. Unfortunately, people don't use their garages like we say they were. Great, okay, we got two-car garages planned, and there's nothing that is mandatory to make people use their garages for their cars. They use them for storage, they use them for whatever, except putting their cars in. So then they wanna park on the streets. And I know at least two folks who are here tonight who live in units on the west, on the east side of Allison, who park on the street there in that street parking that's stuffed every day. I can't imagine adding more multifamily units there without addressing that and maybe adding some street parking like we do on the, on the other side. That would look really strange considering the, the west side of Allison is, is all residential with small driveways and, and, you know, it, there's hardly fences. There's really not much along the street right there. There's no sidewalk or, or anything, it's not developed there. So I am concerned, I, I don't wanna sound like, hey, I've already got my condo, don't build any more condos, but something needs to be done to address not only that intersection, but the area. The more people we stuff in there, the worse that it's gonna get. And I see kids all the time running across streets. I see people wandering around, barely having cars miss them as people are zooming down Allison. And it's, it's not just an enforcement thing. I mean, you, we could put a police officer there 24/7 and you'd be able to pull over the drag racers. And I hear tires squealing all the time on, on Allison there. It's, it's a 25 mile an hour zone. It's not appropriate. So that needs to be addressed along with where are we gonna put all the people? It's great if we say that we want, we want people walking and, oh, we got transportation if the G-line ever actually finishes, you know? I mean, there, there's a lot of what-ifs, and I know we got big plans, but I think we need to address where we're putting all the people and how do we get them in the current transportation they're in, in bicycles, skateboards, vehicles, to not get squashed and injure somebody and then get the light in. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
I'm Sharon Pallett. I live at 5440 Allison Street. I send each of you an email. I am very, very thankful for my neighbor Debbie, I live across the street from her, that she sent this lovely paper explaining everything because I don't know why I'm in the dark, but I didn't even know where to find y'all here. So if you want more people at your meeting, we're gonna have to get out the news about how to find you guys here. I appreciate all the work that you do. I'm sorry, I haven't even been, I've been in Arvada four years. I rent from my son, who owns there, and I sit, love to sit out on my front porch, and I have this little teeny-tiny space through the trees where I get to see mountains. And this is not a place where I chose, I need to live here. This is, this is where I'm at in life. And I treasure looking at the houses across the way. I do not wanna look at a big building. We have plenty of buildings around. When is Arvada gonna stop with all this multi-building? It's gotta stop. We do not have to invite everybody in the world to come live in Arvada. We need to stop these people who come in, put up their wonderful building, think architecturally it's wonderful. Sorry, my husband was an architect, and I love architecture. But you leave, you go home to your home, and nobody's putting up a huge building by your homes. Have each of you been down Allison? That's my question to you. If you have not, you need to. There, the whole street to, I'm not good with directions. Down towards...
Costco?
South, thank you. All the land is being torn up. All these buildings are going in. It's like, do you, we want to move and replace single-family homes? I don't think so. We don't want Arvada to look like this just monstrous building place. And I agree, we've already had these buildings. We have a lot of buildings. We don't need anymore. I'm sorry, I didn't know about the planning commission meeting nor the other prior meetings because I really would have been there. My heart's desire is to see these homes stay. And if those two little homes are being sold by these guys, and I don't know if I'm too late, but it would be nice if somebody else came in and built a home because it's a neighborhood. It's a home. It's my home. And I would love to be able to look at homes and not buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Charles Jones. I'm at 5420 Allison Street.
You can pull that microphone back up if you'd like. There you go.
I chose to live in Arvada, not Denver. If I wanted high density, I would have bought a place in Denver. The reason I specifically chose my corner building is because like Patricia, in the evenings, I mean, in the winter, the, the sunsets are amazingly gorgeous. And this build, these buildings are actually gonna take my sunset away. And so, you know, I, I'm all for development, I get it, but there's a fine line between development and being greedy. And I think we're at a point to where there's starting to be a little greediness, and I don't think this is what's best for the neighborhood. Also, traffic, I'm, unfortunately, I'm off during the summertime, so I'm usually sitting on my front porch. There's traffic zooming by all day long. And someone's gonna get hurt really bad out there. And if we're gonna have this development come in, we have to address the traffic concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jacomo?
Hello, council members. I just wanted to say a few things. You know, I'm kinda here to, once again, to look at bigger picture, more 35,000-foot view, and I'll give my little input on that. But one of the things that's really important, I think, is we can, we know, understand this, this multifamily development is inevitable. The slot-style development is happening all over Denver, as I mentioned them last time I spoke to you guys. And it's really important, I think, now for you, this council, and for the, you know, very near future councils, to address these because this is gonna, this is not gonna be the first one. So just, I think it just, you know, incumbent on you to make really good decisions on this one because they're gonna come in, future, future developments, of course, are gonna come in and they're gonna say, well, look what you let them do, and look what you let them do. You know, fortunately, you're in a position now that this hasn't happened a lot yet in Arvada, but it is gonna happen, and you know, and I know, you know that I know that it's gonna happen because, because the zoning's out there to do it. You know, a couple ways to combat this, I think, is, you know, we need appealing buildings, and elevations need to be somehow, you know, in, in reviewable. And the aesthetic of a building needs to be reviewable. So another thing I just wanna bring up is, you know, back to the land development code being reviewed. So, you know, the more stringent regulations we get in the land development code moving forward will prevent some of these developments from happening. And then the other thing is, you know, we can, you can make a building, building a lot more appealing and a lot more palatable, obviously with appealing elevations, with setbacks and with landscaping. So I, I hope that, you know, today and in the future and with the land development code review, that we, we make those, those three things and, and some of the other important things, you know, priority guidelines. And just a last comment is, you know, you combat greed with regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacomo. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is John Gerand. I live at 11970 West 67th Avenue, Arvada, Colorado. As I have come to council meetings occasionally, I have heard frequently in development plans, a reduction in the amount of required parking associated with TOD than what was by the code. And I would ask that the council consider eliminating that amount of reduction. In various towns, places, like in Old Town, it appears that the parking reductions that have been granted for TOD occupancies haven't really resulted in less cars. And so whether it's applies just to this particular application or in general, I think a strong look ought to be given, not at the theoretical reduction in remount of TOD parking needed, but what is actually happening on the ground? Because I think inadequate parking in TOD areas overflows into other areas. And, and maybe that's not according to the theory, but I think in practice, it's a problem the council ought to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, with that, I'm gonna suggest a, how long of a break would you like? Five minutes? Long enough? Let's do a five-minute break. That'll give you all an opportunity to get your thoughts together for rebuttal, and then it'll give council some time to think about questions we're gonna be asking. And so we'll reconvene at 7:51. And so we'll reconvene at 7:51. Thank you all. We'll reconvene, and I'll give the applicant an opportunity for their, complete their presentation as they have the burden of proof. Yes, you may proceed.
Could we get the screen back up? Well, I'd like to start with facts. I'd like to clarify the facts, because we were all sworn in. If I, if I had the photographs that our neighbor had presented, the fact number one, I'll, I'll start on the front setback. We are 15 feet, 5 inches on our property line. Part of the, well, not part of, the only reason we seek relief in this area is because the city, we dedicated 22 feet back to the city. So when you see the photographs that are shown across the street, they are showing the parking spaces, they are showing part of the landscape, they are showing a lot of things that are not apart, they are city-owned, those things. That opportunity still exists, and it is partly why the city wanted that 22 feet. They've discussed things of adding rows of parking, or parallel parking, pushing the street back out. We can only control what's on our property. And because of that 22 feet, which is, I mean, it's a lot. It's a big chunk of land. And when we lost that chunk of land, that put a hardship on us with respect to the front setback. So to say that we are 15 feet off of the street, we are actually 18 feet six. The 15 feet five is to our property line. There is an additional 3 foot, 1 inches to the back of curb. And you can see that on the plan that I have here. So, again, to reiterate, we are not asking, the main reason for us for that relief is because we had to give 22 feet. Within that dashed line that you see out here, there'll be street improvements, there, the, the curb and gutter could push back out to add parallel parking. All of those things are possible down the road. We don't control those things. Speaking of things that we don't control, the traffic. Several people mentioned the traffic in this area. I am not in a position to dispute drivers driving 40 miles an hour down a 25 mile an hour street. I will say that's not a unique problem to this street, nor this city, nor this block. Our project will not, the addition of 10 residences would not fall on any traffic chart. When you go to do a traffic study to analyze the traffic impacts of a development, you, there are certain thresholds that you need to meet. This project would not even fall on those thresholds. Again, we cannot, this project cannot solve or would be a detriment to any of the traffic in this area. Otherwise, that would have been dealt with at the staff level. Other, other constraints that have pushed us into the PUD, there was one of, one of the women who had mentioned that, that I could build this exactly the way it is. I apologize if that was the impression that she got. The only reason we're here is because we cannot build it exactly as it is. If we build it exactly as it is, we would have gone through administrative processes through the city and done things that way. There are very specific things, I already had mentioned the right-of-way dedication, but there is a sewer, a water easement that feeds the townhome property to the west that runs down our central driveway. So it's not only just aligning the traffic. We have to protect that easement in a hardscaped area. It serves the water to the townhomes to the west. Every property has to solve their own problems on their own site. But because we have an easement 20, 25 feet wide, Cole? 25 feet wide, running down the center of our property, that is an adverse condition that we are dealing with and have to, to allow our neighbors to the west to have water. On the south side of that property, Matt had mentioned earlier, the sewer easement. That sewer takes drainage, stormwater runoff. In any new development, all projects have to deal with their own stormwater runoff. We are taking the stormwater runoff from the townhomes to the west, running it along our south property line, and doing some street improvements. As the one gentleman who requested about street improvements, we, again, can only improve the street, and we are, from the southern edge of our property line to the northern edge of our property line along Allison. Other areas of the street, I, I completely agree, need improvements. But again, we can only improve what is in front of our property. And we are doing that in accordance with the guidelines and working with staff on those issues. So the front setback, the right-of-way dedication, the water easement running through our property, and the storm, stormwater easement on the southern end of our property have put some significant constraints on this development, which is why the PUD process. Not because it's easier, trust me, it's not an easy process to do this. We started this process back last August, so we're in about a year. There's no easy process when it comes to development. We, we didn't go this route because it was easier. We went this route through several meetings with staff to determine that this was the best and most desired way, working with the city of Arvada, to come to that common goal of providing multifamily development within a multifamily district. Lot coverage. Lot coverage is, is not quite as stated here. We're not trying to pull a wool over anybody's eyes. We're, we're doing, we are responding to the numbers in the way they're provided by code. You have lot coverage and you have open space. The city of Arvada calculates lot coverage. It was mentioned by the neighbor to the north that lot coverage is the building footprint. That's not true. Lot coverage is the building footprint. It is the sidewalks. It is the driveway. So it is things that are very open to the sky. Open space is your landscaped area, which we meet the requirement for open space for this size. We do not meet lot coverage because, again, I could say maybe an anomaly in the code, because different codes read differently, but we are at 42% lot coverage on buildings. A single-family residence is at 40% lot coverage. So when you compare the two, to say we are grossly oversized on a building footprint is just not an accurate statement, at least in my world. 2% is a margin of error. With respect to the bulk plane and height restrictions on the building, and I would be happy to hear staff tell me that I'm wrong with respect to this, but we've read the code over and over. On a single-family residential building, I do not have a bulk plane requirement. If I have a single-family house next to me, I can build a three-story house. The one gentleman said he lives in a two-story house. There is no restriction, other than the height restrictions of 35 feet, 5-foot setbacks on the side, 40 foot, 40% open space with respect to a single family. Our point in showing this is not to say somebody would build a building this big. It's to show, this is the buildable envelope of that building. They may only build it 30 feet deep. This is a common-looking Denver square from a building perspective. You could have a two-story building with a rooftop deck across the entire single-family residence. There is nothing in this code that says I cannot build a three-story, single-family residence 5 feet off of the property line. And I'm happy to be proven wrong by anybody at staff, but that's not an accurate statement that was presented by the neighbor. I think that is all I have. Matt, I know, has a few other comments. Again, but my goal was to, again, get back to the facts of what we are presenting here. And there was some misleading information with respect to some of the testimony. And hopefully, I've been able to clarify that. And during the question period, if you need further clarification, I'm happy to answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will, I will, of course, be brief. First off, I want to thank everybody who did comment. Debbie, thank you for flying in again to, to voice your opinion. As Andy said, we're not trying to pull a fast one here. If we fit perfectly within the box that is outlined, basically, or the guidelines on this property, we wouldn't be here tonight. We wouldn't be asking. We wouldn't be going the PUD route. But, but that is where we are. With the bulk plane, I wanted to address a couple, a couple of factors. One, a question was raised about, you know, the sun study, and where did this, where did the sun study come from? It's an AIA-approved program that smarter people than I put together to measure where the sun is at a particular time of day and location, and how it affects a given property. We showed on the sun study, again, and I'll just put it up here just to show one, just to clarify, the hearing dated today, this is showing the buildings that we are proposing. This is showing what, as Andy said, is the buildable envelope for a single-family home on that lot. It is what could be built. And we are by no means saying that that is what we are going to build, or somebody would build a behemoth of that size. But the reason we put that up there was to show that, at four points of time during the year, what we're proposing wasn't adversely impacting the property to the north any more than what could already be done by right. It's a little bit more in the wintertime, just that, and I'll put it right. This is the wintertime one. You can see it goes a little bit farther than it does over here. But again, the neighbor was specifically concerned about her driveway and her walkway, and those are both on the southern side of her property. So with any structure, those are not going to get the sun during the wintertime. Even with a 6-foot fence, they will not get sun during the wintertime, because the sun is so low in the sky. Going back to, again, privacy with the, and again, I'm kind of dwelling on the bulk plane, because that's a big one for us right here. We addressed the issue of privacy. When I'm looking at the bulk plane and when we're talking about it, I'm asking myself, is I understand that the strict application of what is written, and it's basically a diagonal angle, a foot for a foot, you know, and it goes in respecting the single-family home to the north. The result of that, though, is that it penalizes us for trying to use the property exactly for what it's owned for. And it penalizes us for trying to develop that property in conformity with the comprehensive plan. And, and I flip the scenario a little bit and play what if, and say, okay, you know, what if this doesn't get approved, or it gets approved with the condition that we have to follow that bulk plane? Well, you've gotten your pound of flesh out of us, so to speak. And we have to come up with some sort of a project that follows this horizontal line bulk plane. But now, if the neighbor to the north turns around and sells her property, she doesn't have that restriction anymore. She can build straight up, or she can build to a multifamily bulk plane, because we've taken the bullet, so to speak, on the south side. So I don't think that the, I don't think that was the intent. And I think the result of that is slightly inequitable. And I just want to kind of highlight that in terms of playing it out on how that impacts the property. You know, a great question that was raised was, and I, and I understand it. I think one thing I like to, it's easy to say the big bad developer, like a locust that descend from the sky or something and destroy a neighborhood, but that's, you know, not necessarily an accurate reflection. I mean, we obviously all have families. We're human. We have feelings. We understand neighborhoods. We all live in neighborhoods. I live in a neighborhood. I'm sensitive to my neighborhood. And the question was raised, what do you want Arvada to be? And it's a great question. We ask that about our community all the time. My answer is, wasn't that question answered in the comprehensive code? Didn't, you know, the, the bright minds in Arvada and the public have a chance to, to provide input and say, this is what we want Arvada to be? And in this particular part of Arvada, we said we want it to be an area of higher density, an area that is kind of new urbanism, or that is walkable, that is, ride your bike to Old Town, that is, to be able to get on the light rail. It's not a suburban area. And I feel like the, there's this image out there that we're going to come in and build this behemoth in the middle of these single-family homes, and that's not the case. To the south of us are apartment buildings. To the west of us are condominiums. To the east of us are more apartment buildings and more condominiums or townhomes. The only single-family homes are to the north of us, and it's a small handful of residences. And I'm not downplaying their concerns, because that is their home, and I understand that. But putting it in context, that area has a much different feel. It is not, it is not suburban Arvada. It is not whatever you want to call it. It is moving in that direction. Goal L5, and not to bore you by reading your own comprehensive plan to you, but goal L5 says that the purpose is to designate and promote redevelopment and infill to generate economic revitalization, improve physical conditions, and provide an appropriate mix of quality housing choices. And policy L5.1 in targeted redevelopment areas specifically lists Old Town Station. We are trying to do that. This is an infill site. The homes that are on this site right now are absolutely dilapidated. And that's not because of our neglect. They were that way when we bought them. We would love to tear them down, but we're not going to tear them down until we know what we can build. But they are by no means contributing to the, the surrounding neighborhood right now. And by providing and building these townhomes, which is for-sale product, this is people that will have a vested interest. They will own their unit in that area that is far better than some of the alternatives that we see going up, or far better than some of the alternatives in front of us. That's not the route we want to go. We want to build these townhomes. I appreciate your time, and I will cede the microphone, unless anybody has any questions.
Very good. We'll close the public testimony portion, open it up for city council questions in action. Mr. Marriott, you get to lead off.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a number of questions, some for the applicant, some, some for staff. So I want to start off probably with the applicant. Is your plan to connect your central driveway back to 54th Place to the west? Does that go all the way through and make a connection back there?
No, there's an existing townhome project to the west, and that is their parking lot. To do that, we would eliminate four to five parking spaces, and I don't think that's a, I don't think they would allow that.
Okay. So, so, so yours, there'll be a fence across the west part of the property, and your, your driveway just stops back there?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I wasn't clear about that. Let me ask you a question about the, the existing two houses that are there. How does the front setback of your property, or your proposed buildings, compare to the existing houses that are there? Does that solar study about accurate, as far as how they'll sit?
Solar study? They're pretty similar in line with the residents to the north. So this, this building is the residence to the north. This is their detached garage, and I believe this is a storage shed.
And so the, the current houses are about lined up with that residence to the north. Your buildings are going to be a bit closer to the street.
That's correct.
Okay, okay. So let me ask a question of the staff, and that is, do you know or have a comparison, maybe to the center line of Allison Street, how far the buildings on the east side, the new, new townhomes on the east side, versus how far from the center lines the proposal here is?
I'm sorry, we do not have the information for the center line. It's been a few months since I looked at the water tower development plans. The setbacks there, as stated in the staff report, were under 10 feet, are under 10 feet. I believe they range between 7 and 9 feet along Allison from the property line of Allison, or the right-of-way boundary of Allison. I do not know the center line setback.
Right. Because that, you know, that, that's kind of, as you go up the street, that's what you see, is you're more referenced on the center line of Allison Street than, than where the property lines are, which can obviously, obviously vary. Let me ask you another question while I have you here. And that is, I know currently, on the west side of Carr Street, which is somewhat similar in this street, there's a new sidewalk going in and a, a project to, to improve that side of the street. And Allison Street is somewhat similar in the, the west side, has no sidewalks or drain pan or, or any of that kind of stuff. Is there any plan for kind of a missing sidewalk project up the, up the west side of Allison Street? Or if there is, what would that look like?
Mr. Marriott, we, as you know, we have developers install sidewalk curb and gutter as they come in to build. At this current time, we don't have any plans to do additional walk in that area.
Okay. And where, where these people would have to build is kind of where it would ultimately be if it were done?
Correct. We've asked them to place the curb and gutter in the ultimate location.
In the ultimate location. Okay. Thank you. I'm going to ask a question again for the staff about lot coverage. I think the applicant mentioned something that the lot coverage is measured not just on the buildings, but on the hard surfaces, the driveway pans and things like that. Is that true?
Lot coverage is primarily the building footprint. There are other items that can be included, such as decks, whether uncovered or covered. They have to meet certain criteria. However, sidewalks, driveways are not considered in lot coverage.
Not considered in lot coverage. Okay. Do you agree?
Why dispute that? Because then our lot coverage is much less. Our, if it's buildings, we are 42% lot coverage, and so...
So tell me what, what your footprints are of the two buildings?
It's 42% of the lot.
Well, but do you know how many square feet it is?
I don't know the exact square footage of the residences, but 42% is the coverage of the building. And had we not had to give away 22 feet of right-of-way, we would have met that easily.
Yeah. So when I look at your plan, I guess I see two buildings each 39 and 1/4 by 106 and 1/2. Is that right?
Uh, yes.
That's what it shows on the plan I have, unless that's changed. And so by my math, that's about 8,500 square feet total between the two.
That sounds about right.
And your lot is 18,500?
Yes.
Is that right? 18,577? Okay. So I think, I think that's more than 40%.
It's 42%.
Well, I'm not going to argue math with you, but I think it, I think it's, I think you don't comply there. Okay, so that's okay. I just wanted to...
I'll give you the exact dimensions. We are 77, 90 square feet of gross residential.
Okay.
Because there's ins and outs and jogs and so...
Okay, got it. As you do this. Okay. So one last question. I only have one more, and that's, it looks like on the southwest corner of your property, I see on the plan, it looks like a drainage kind of infall, maybe off the parking lot to the west? Is that correct?
Yes. As I described a little bit earlier, we, we are taking water from the parking, as well as taking care of our own stormwater runoff, taking water from the property to the west.
Okay.
And we have a civil engineer here who could explain that in greater detail if you want, better technical information than I can give you.
Looks to me like your plan is to, is to divert that to kind of the center of your driveway and then out to the storm sewer from there. Is that, is that correct?
I'd rather defer that to my civil engineer, if that's okay. Can you speak?
Is he here to?
He's here.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. My name is Cole Hopper with HCI Engineering. Our offices are located at 621 South Park Drive in Littleton, Colorado. To answer your question, yes, we are, the Weeping Willow subdivision historically has drained all their water to the east into kind of the corner there, and there is an existing sewer easement, as well as drainage easement and pan that conveys that water from their property down to the roadside ditch on Allison. And there's actually an old dilapidated inlet culvert that then conveys it to your storm sewer that runs north-south in Allison. What we have proposed is to take that and swoop it north into the center of our aisle, pipe it right away, and put it in the storm sewer. And then we have worked with staff to very carefully burn the property on the south side to make sure that no escape flows could go off-site, bypass our swoop, if you will, and impact the property to the south.
Okay. And so the, I think that's what I thought it was, based on the thing. So you were describing a storm drainage on the extreme southern side of the property. Is that to just catch drainage from the property itself and move that on out to the?
If I may, if I may ask you, are you talking about in the proposed condition or historic condition?
Proposed. So I'm looking at the, at the plan.
So yes, sir. So in addition to the redirecting of the Weeping Willow subdivision flows around or through our site, we're also having some small front area, yard area drainage that are being picked up by local area inlets that is then as well being conveyed and tied into the proposed storm sewer, ultimately discharging to the city storm sewer.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
That's all I have for now.
There you go. Mr. Jones?
Thank you. So I'll start first with a question to staff. The applicant started off their remarks, and I probably won't quote this exactly, but two major factors that make this property hard to develop. And then went on to clarify later in their testimony that, and just said it a few minutes ago, that if we didn't have to give back 22%, then we could fit, we could do this. So I guess, let's start there. I'm not exactly sure.
22 feet, not percent?
Was it 22 feet? I heard 22%.
It was. Sorry, he said 22 feet, or he meant to say 22 feet, whether or not he actually said it.
Okay. It could be my ears. So 22 feet.
Rest of us heard feet.
Okay, good. Thank you. Like I said, I wasn't sure if I could quote this exactly. Help me understand why we made it difficult from the start.
It was, I believe it was 17 feet, and that was the right-of-way dedication to get our standard right-of-way width for Allison Street. So every property, as they develop, if the right-of-way does not meet the minimum width requirements, are required to dedicate their share as measured from the center line.
Okay, so I am, you're talking way over my pay grade.
So let's say we had a 60-foot wide right-of-way, and 65-foot wide minimum required right-of-way, and it was only 40 feet wide in their location, they would be required to dedicate half of the remainder. So they would be required to dedicate 10 of the 20 feet to make the minimum.
Mr. Jones, if I may, as these properties in these older parts of towns develop piece by piece, we've found that the right-of-way does not meet our current standards to put in, in this case, a minor collector's street. So as they come in, we ask them to make dedications of right-of-way to the city, and I believe that's what the gentleman's referring to, so that we meet our minimum requirements and the street can be built, at least on his side of the road, to the ultimate width.
Okay. Okay. So with that being said, then, the 25 feet, 25-foot easement for the sewer line, and I guess the stuff that's running down the driveway that's hardscaped over, and the alignment of their driveway with the street across. So again, it feels like we've, by making them align that street with that hardscape over our utilities, we're again, making it hard from the very start.
The civil engineer may want to speak to that, but we have to have a certain amount of easement and right-of-way. And in this case, we had to have right-of-way to, well, that aligns up with the property to the west to convey the water, the storm water and the sanitary, and I believe the water lines over there. So making it hard probably is a fair assumption. We would have asked this of any other developer coming in, and we typically ask for easements along the backsides or fronts of property to convey utilities.
Okay, so let's just pretend for a second that I came in and bought the properties and wanted to develop two single-family homes, irrespective of size, height and all of that. What would be required of me in that area for the same purposes?
Could you, could you give me your question again, please?
Sure. If I came in and bought those two properties myself and wanted to develop single-family detached homes, what would be required of me for the same issues?
We would, we would ask you to continue to convey the storm water from the property to the west and find a way to do that. The other issue here is that the 24 feet of right-of-way down the middle is a fire department request to get the fire equipment in there. A single, two single-family homes would have been a completely different story, would not have been required.
Okay.
But would the front dedication still been required?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So that same 22 feet on the front side, if they were single-family detached homes, would still be a requirement of me if I went in to buy those lots?
If you, if you'd come in and tried to rezone or just move the lot line, yes. If you wanted to, and I'll look to Rita or Jake to confirm this, but if you'd come in and scrape those homes and build two new homes, that'd be, that'd be an existing condition, and so you would take your easements and whatnot from the street.
Okay. So now, I'm, and again, I apologize, but I'm, I'm a little confused by the request to go from residential multifamily to PUDR, and maybe Rita or someone can help me understand why that's necessary.
The PUD talks about addressing a unique circumstance, and I think the applicant kind of highlighted the points well, that essentially, they couldn't build, develop the property in a manner that conformed or, in a manner that was consistent with the long-range plans, and with the comprehensive plans, future land use designation of high-density residential. The bulk plan would have limited the development of the northern lot severely. The locations of the sewers, the utility mains, not private service lines, but city mains, affected lot layout, as did the location of the driveway, and then just generally the size of the lots themselves also, I think, played into that.
Okay, so as I'm looking at the staff report on page four, the graphic that shows the residential multifamily district that's kind of in a brown color, and then across Allison, which runs kind of, kind of down the center, the PUD BPR, which is purple, at least to me, we're going to carve, we're going to carry that purple across the street into these two lots only by this request?
Correct. And now, it would be PUDR, not PUD BPR.
So they're going to be a different color?
Correct. It'll be a different zone district. It's still a planned unit development zone district, however, it is residential only, whereas a BPR is business professional residential.
Okay, so it's been pointed out a couple of times that council strategic, oops, oh my goodness, I just lost it. Let me get back to where I was here. Yeah, same page, right below it. The council strategic plan contains the following goal with the, with the growth and economic development priority section, that by 2019, 25% of new housing will be located in neighborhoods or developments that incorporate a mix of lots, mix of lot sizes, development densities, and housing types and styles. I don't know that I was on council when that particular goal was set, but maybe someone on council could help me understand what that meant. Was that new development, or was that specifically tied back to the land development code that the applicant spoke to a few moments ago?
I thought you asked that of council. I'm happy to answer that.
I just don't know who can answer it.
Okay. At the council retreat, when I was there, the indication was for new development that came into the city, that we create that mix within neighborhoods.
So it wasn't necessarily a greenfield development, like what's going on on the west side of town? It was any development?
Anywhere. And we would need to define the neighborhood that that would encompass.
Okay.
And I would clarify, it's only 25% of new housing, not 100% of new housing.
Right. I don't think I said 100%.
No, you didn't say either. I'm just clarifying.
Well, but in this case, it would be, in this particular change, it would be 100% of the housing in that particular change that would be, that I guess we're looking at for mix of lot sizes and...
Well, I'd clarify, it's just all the development we get, 25% of those developments should be that.
Okay, thank you.
But I'm saying 100% because every time they come to us, it's always mixed use, high-density. I don't say anything less than 100%.
And then, one final question. Again, I think that we've talked a lot about it, but currently, the bulk plan standard as written today, that's written in the land development code? Someone, could they shake their head? Because I don't know where it's written.
Yes, it is in the land development code.
When, when our predecessors were, were going through land development code and required that language to be included, what do you suppose the intention was?
There is not an intent statement tied to the bulk plan standard, or there is also no approval criteria tied to it. So any answer I give you would be, would be speculation. And if you'd like, I would be more than willing to elaborate.
Okay. No, that's fine. That's all the questions I have for now.
Okay, Mr. Pfeiffer, you're next.
All right, in no particular order. I want to start off right off the bat because the applicant said something, and I wrote it down right away. You stated that you are not asking for a zone change. He said it. So I want to clarify before we do any more debate. You said no zone change. You were going to stick with what we have. So...
I, then that was probably, I apologize if that's misleading. When I say zone change in terms of it's zoned for residential multifamily, when I say we're not use change, it would have been a better choice of words, because I know with the PUD, we're asking for a new zoning of the parcel.
Yeah, you were, used a lot of wrong words in that paragraph, so I wrote it down really quick when you said it.
Yeah, my apologies. Certainly not looking for, we want to stick within the use.
So you're not looking for, okay, so you are asking for PUDR?
Absolutely.
Zone change. Okay. Just want to be on the record, make sure we're clear on that. So going back, I want to go back to Mr. Jones, the 22 feet, 17 feet, whoever has the right number of feet. Is that square footage that we're giving, that we're asking for right-of-way, or is that linear footage?
It's, it's depth. It's across the entire frontage of the property.
So 17 feet deep into the property?
Correct.
Okay, because, well, when I looked at this, it don't, it didn't say that necessarily when we look at the drawings. It said three feet. There was a three feet from the property line, then four feet of landscaping area, then five feet sidewalk, and then five feet and six inches of additional landscaping to the building. So 17 feet deep. I don't understand how that works on the drawings. Absolutely. So what does that mean? It looks like to me, if it's the three feet they're referring to, it's square footage on the frontage that they're taking for the right-of-way. I just need clarification that that's really what it is. 17 feet back does not match anything in here.
Mr. Pfeiffer, the 17 feet, the 18 feet that I spoke of earlier is measured from the back of the curb to the front of the building.
Okay, so, but, but we're not taking that. They're claiming that we're, we're taking that.
I'm just trying to clarify the different numbers that you've heard. And so then, they dedicated a, an amount of right-of-way, and that was measured in width. And I'll have to consult their civil engineer to find out exactly what that width was.
Because they were, they were claiming in their testimony that in the three feet of, that they had a linear feet that's on these drawings, seven of eight, from the property line, the three feet has created hardship for them. So I want to understand hardship, three feet, 17, 18 feet. I don't, I have no idea. Yeah, I have that drawing. That's the one I'm talking about. So the, you have the dashed line, which is your property line, and then you have the curb line, and according to the top of that, it says it's three feet one inch. Right?
Do you want me to answer to this?
Sure.
Okay. This dashed line out here is the 20, part of that 22 feet I'm referring to, which was a part of the original property. That is the part of the dedication back. The three feet outside of the property line, that three foot one inch right there, is from the property line to the back of the curb. That's where the street is. There's also a 13-foot easement that has a tree lawn, a sidewalk. That is also, it's still our property, but it's an easement that the city is controlling, telling us what we need to put there. That's the sidewalk, the tree lawn, and then the additional three feet that's outside of the property line. Does that make sense?
So the line that, the line that says Allison Street?
Yes.
We're making the street 22 feet additional wider?
No, we're making the street an additional three feet wider. They're dedicating the right-of-way to accommodate that.
Oh, so we don't own the right-of-way in the middle of the street today? Because they're, they're saying it's the street. It shows it's the street.
That's just a label. I mean, that's where it will be today. That dashed line was where the property was.
Guys, I'm having a...
The dashed line, Mr. Pfeiffer, to the right of the word Allison Street?
Yeah.
I believe is a former right-of-way line.
And that right, okay, that former right-of-way line resides where today? In, in the middle of the street?
It's in the middle of the street, I believe, or it's close to the middle of the street. So there are probably some use of the street that was not public right-of-way.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. I'm, I'm struggling with this because of this hardship, and we throw a lot of numbers and a lot of shell game going on here, and I'm not following it. But I just want to understand the hardship claim, and that's why I'm drilling down on the questions, is hardship, and I'm not finding that. So I see this as three feet, but you're saying 18, 17 feet, 22 feet? What is it?
Well, the 18 feet is the distance from our building to the back of the street. That was in response to the comment from the neighbor saying we were... That was in response to the comment from the neighbor saying we were 15 feet away from the street. And so I was just to clarify that comment.
Okay, so that's 18 feet for the curb to the building, and then there's some additional footage of some sort out to the street, from the curb line out somewhere?
That was a part of the old right of way dedication.
All right.
Which we are saying is partial loss on our, on our side.
Okay. The, so I want to go back to also setbacks. What I read in the staff report, and what I heard testimony from the citizen and from the applicant, I could not triangulate who is right. I'm hoping one of you can help me understand the setbacks. So if it is a one, because the staff report says that the current RM zoning has a setback for three-story building in front of 25 feet, and sides are 15, and rear is 15. The citizen claimed that our document said for one story, that would be true, two-story, there's a further setback, three-story, there's a further setback. So which, what is correct?
So in the multi, in the RM zone district, in the existing zoning, the setbacks do vary based on the number of stories. However, the front setback is 25 feet regardless of the number of stories. The side setback varies from a seven and a half for a one-story to 15 feet for a three-story for the side, and then the rear follows those exact same numbers.
So where do I get, and I am sorry, I'm trying, I've read this over and over, and I still get confused on the staff report and then also what I'm hearing. Where does it, where does it, where do we get the impression that there's incremental 10-feet setbacks based on each story? Where is that impression coming from?
It's not an incremental 10-foot setback based on each story. The bulk plane requirement says, "When a multifamily development is within 100 feet of a single-family or duplex development, they must meet the bulk plane standard," which is essentially a one-foot setback for every one foot of height. So it's a 45-degree angle from the shared property line.
So that's where you get, that's where you get the setback. So if we did the bulk plane, there would have to be that setback?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so another confusing area is in regards to claim between the applicant, and what we get in the staff report, is in regards to the lot size and the coverage. He's claiming 42%, and that's 40% in the current zone? But in the current zone, I understand it to be 30%, not 40.
And that also changes with the use in the current zone district. So a single-family home in the RM zone district can have a 40% maximum lot coverage.
A single home can?
A single-family detached home.
Not a three-story home.
No, just one home. It could be three stories. It can go up to 35 feet in height. That is true, and it could go 40% lot coverage, as long as it's a single-family dwelling unit.
We might need to get a little bit better at comparing apples to apples of what we are today and where we're going tomorrow, because I think that we're bleeding all this together, and it's been difficult to follow this. So in the RM zone, they can have a multi-dwelling unit lot coverage in the RM zone of 30%?
That is correct.
Okay, so 30%, so apples to apples, 30%. Them using 40% is not accurate. Okay. So it's 30%. Okay. So they are increasing with the zone, also getting into the 42% by changing it to the PUDR zone. They can get to 40% within the PUDR multifamily?
Well, the base standard in the PUDR is 25%.
Okay, that's what I thought, because that's in the staff report. So 25%. So they're actually asking to increase from 25% to 42%, not just 2%.
From the base standards in the PUDR, yes.
Okay. Okay, and applicant, the solar study, we'll go over the solar study in your shadow. The reservation I have with that study is, how about if you're wrong? How do we know that you are right and that you don't create some other issue? Then what? You're not going to tear down the building. I mean, we're kind of dealt with whatever you put up. So then what? I mean, how confident are we into that shadow study?
Well, it's how confident are we in the American Institute of Architects? They put together the program.
I'm asking you, not, I don't know them.
Well, I have to trust my profession, just as a lawyer trusts their profession, a doctor trusts their profession in certain manners. I'm trusting their profession in the study and the software that was put out that we put this study together. And what we're showing within the study is, the purpose of the study and the purpose of some of the other questions that you were asking is not to muddy the waters, but to explain, this is what's allowed with this bulk plane, and because of the sun angle, our building is no different than the bulk plane that is allowed in place during the summer months, the prime usage.
Assuming the bulk plane is used on an RM single-family house?
Correct. Because that's the only, that's, the bulk plane is only, there's only one bulk plane, as Jake has said. It's from zero on a 45-degree angle.
But it's a single house, not a multi-dwelling unit. I mean, you're not comparing apples to apples, because I don't, I don't know who's going to, the one, they'll have a 35-foot setback. On an RM, single-family, right, with a bulk plane, the way I just understood it, there'd be a setback that's further, of 35 feet.
Not for a single-family home?
No.
For a multi?
For a multifamily development.
So then you should have been 35 feet from the edge here to show that shadow?
No, we're showing, we're showing what our project does versus what is allowed under the bulk plane requirements. That, to us, is the relevant study. To show 35 feet back isn't, isn't relevant, because it's not what we're proposing.
But you're proposing an exception to some of these rules, and I'm just trying to understand them.
Sure.
So you're convinced that I should support your proposal?
And the purpose of the study is to show that it is no different than what is allowed used by right. The shadows cast by the bulk plane that is allowed on a single-family residence or a multifamily residence of this type, because we would have to fall within that bulk plane, this is the shadow that it elicits. So if we were to build a multifamily building, it would fall within the constraints of the bulk plane that you see on the right. Our project is what we show on the left, and when you look at them, in some cases, ours is better, and it's a negligible difference between the two.
Okay.
And hopefully, I mean, that was the way we, to us, made the most sense, to show this. What is allowed? And this is a, this could be a multifamily building within this bulk plane. This is our multifamily building with the current, with the sun study.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And there's no difference.
Okay, I feel a little dense on this, but we might come back to it.
Sure.
Because I'm just not following some of it. One quick question also for staff. The conditions that the planning commission gave seem to be a lot different now that's in front of us. Any, like, comparison to what was the planning commission recommendation on conditions, and what is today, and why they changed? Because I had a hunt that they were different, and I found that they were different. So one example was, part of the condition was an eight-foot fence. Today, they're saying no eight-foot fence. Nowhere in here did it say we're removing the eight-foot on the memo to us. It just says, "We're just going to honor a buffer and throw some trees up." But it doesn't reference the eight-foot fence and how we put closure to that requirement.
If you carry over the recommended condition from planning commission, we would require them to build an eight-foot fence. They have not indicated that they would not build it. I think where the confusion might lie is that now they are adding the eight-foot buffer along the north property line in addition to the fence. The eight-foot buffer was not part of their original site plan.
So they're going to take all the modifications from the planning, as well as what's been in this memo, are both, are in addition to. They're not in replace up or alteration?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. We probably should label that as additional modifications, not just modifications.
These were applicant-initiated modifications. They weren't planning commission recommendations or staff recommendations.
Okay. I think, oh, the last thing, oh, the garages. So how wide are your garages? I couldn't tell on your plan how wide the garages were, the two, the two-car garages?
20 feet clear inside.
So 20 feet width on the garages, and we're going to have folks turn a 90-degree angle and get two cars in, a 20-foot garage?
It's a common turning radius in any alley condition in most urban settings.
Okay. I get concerned that we jam them in like that, and then people can only get one car in, and then where do they park? I think that's the reality of what really happens in these locations, at least all the ones I've visited and people I know that live in them. They only put one car in. They never put two. So, and especially if their garages are mostly 20, 22 feet, and I've noticed they can't just, they can't turn in. So what this leads to is the four lot, the four visitor spots. The reason you went down one is just because of how the restriction on the property? Is that, is that why?
That's correct.
Okay.
We had a plan initially that had more parking, but as we slowly lost parts of our site, our depth and things shrunk, so... And with respect to the parking and visitors' parking, that's something we can control through the HOA in terms of, those are dedicated visitor spots. They're not for your car, so you can put your lawnmower in the garage.
Okay, and so the HOA is a for-sure thing? You will be doing it? Because everything before said you weren't, or you didn't have?
Well, it was just premature in terms of questions, and as we, one, listened to the concerns of planning commission, as well as discussing it amongst ourselves, it's a necessary, necessary thing that needs to be in place for snow removal, trash removal, lawn maintenance, things of that nature.
Yeah, and then with the HOA, would you put a restriction in that the garages would only be used for parking vehicles, not storage?
We certainly could. I'll let Matt, as an owner, speak to that. That's a, that's a more owner-driven thing than an architect-driven thing.
That's a good question. I honestly, I'm not afraid to say I don't know. I don't know to what extent an HOA can restrict how a resident chooses to use the interior of their space, and whether or not then it's overstepping its bounds. What I was going to say to that is, obviously, we are fully committed to the HOA. That 20-foot garage configuration and the alley is not something we just kind of drew up. That is a tried and true measurement, turning radius into the garages, and on several other projects that we have done in multiple different areas. So I can speak from experience, and we've had no issues parking those. It's come up before where somebody had said, "Well, you know, what if I've got, you know, an extended-length Suburban, or I've got something that just doesn't fit in that garage?" Two-fold answer to that. One, the HOA exists to present somebody, prevent somebody from parking an oversized vehicle or something that doesn't belong in the guest spots. Secondly, whether or not somebody's car fits in the garage is an issue that we look at also in terms of marketability. You know, if I have a Suburban and it doesn't fit in that garage, that's probably not the townhome for my, for me to buy. But we do know you can park most cars in there comfortably, side by side.
Mr. Pfeiffer, does that answer your question? Because I might be able to offer some context on the drive aisle in the garages, if you'd like.
Yeah, we can do it offline. I think it answered. It's just, reality tells me something different than studies.
Yeah, I mean, the way to think of this is that drive aisle down the middle is a few feet wider than an aisle in a department store parking lot, and those, and those parking spots are about 90 feet wide. So, you know, the expectation there is that you pull into that, and these, you know, these are about, these are actually a little bigger.
It's a little different when there's a wall right there and you try to pull in. I think we all get nervous.
Practice your accuracy.
All right, thank you. That's all the questions, Mayor.
Mr. McGough.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, just a few questions, just to clarify. I think early on, you mentioned about the balconies and that they would be facing the interior. I just wanted to make sure that we have it on the record, that the end units are facing east and west on the, on the end units. So three are facing interior on each bank, and two are facing east and west. Just...
Yeah, that's correct. Our intent again on that was a response to...
I just think early in the presentation, you mentioned the interior, but the end units will face either east or west on the balconies. So just wanted to make sure on that. To the parking in garages, I can just tell you my experience living in an HOA, yes, it is a requirement, and it's fully enforceable with the rules. I can park in my garage or I can park on my driveway. I cannot park on the street. I cannot use the visitor parking places, and it's fully enforceable and has been enforced in the time I've been there, so that should not be a problem to incorporate that into the rules of the HOA. I wondered, staff, about the water line. Is the water line goes basically down the center of the driveway? Historically, I'm just wondering why the water line was placed there to feed the line in the west rather than going in a right of way? Was that, was that on a property line?
You know, probably he was there, Mr. McGough, it's probably there to create a loop system through there, being now that we have, we went from two single-family homes to some townhomes multifamily, and typically what they like to do with the water department is create a loop so that it doesn't, they shut off one end and come back and work on, and the water still flows through there.
But isn't it the case that usually water lines create the loop by going in the right of way rather than through a property?
Usually, but not always.
Not always. Certainly not always. We know that for sure. Okay. Let's see. I did have another, just more of a comment, oh, a question, I guess, first of all. This is, the zoning here is, what do we, what do we call it? The RM?
It's residential multifamily, RM is correct.
And what's the zoning to the north on the property?
It is the same. It is RM zoning.
Okay, and that's what, at least is a major consideration for me, is that the current zoning allows for residential, multiple residential, so it does also to the north, and of course, it's there to the east and west and south, and it is compatible with the comprehensive plan, which has been, the statements in the comprehensive plan have been there for some period of time and have been adopted by the council. So in, I'm trying to balance that out with the impacts upon the property to the north. I might have more difficulty if the property to the north were R1 or something. I have a different consideration when it's RM, and perhaps in the rest of the discussion by the council, you can, you might share some thoughts with me concerning the comprehensive plan and the current zoning designations of this property and the properties around it.
Hey, Nancy Ford.
Bob, can you tell me how wide Allison Street is today from about, and when you do the width of the street, do you include the parking spaces? Because you have the configuration of the sidewalk kind of jutting out and the parking spaces in between.
If you can give me a minute, I can tell you the width. Our typical right of way for a minor collector is 60 feet, and so in this case, we're looking for about 32 feet flow line to flow line on that street. So that's where they place their curb and gutter, is on the outside, the west edge of that, and I'm not having a photo here yet, but it's 28 feet, I guess.
28? You said that eventually there were improvements that were going to be done on Allison. Can you tell me what they would be in the future?
Well, over the long term, our goal is to, as you know, we have our citizens' transportation committee, and they've identified 25 miles of missing sidewalk. Ultimately, what we like to do is come back in and fill those 25 miles, and we're particularly focused, as you know, on the gold line stations, the G-line stations. At some point in time, we probably look to build some sidewalk in this area. I don't know that Allison rises to the top 10 in this case, because there are other locations that are closer and probably more urgent, but long-term would be, as these properties come in and develop along the stretch road, we'd have them, we'd require them to do the same thing these gentlemen are doing for their development.
But it wouldn't be the same as the east side of Allison next to the water tower?
Same in what sense? I mean, we ask for curb gutter and detached walk.
Well, they're sort of, they kind of jut out like that. I don't know what you call that, but you have parking in between, and then you have these...
That's your vision there, Bob. Can you?
Actually, 2020, I can see, I just find that.
Can you see that?
We might, you know, depending on the use and the intensity, we might ask them to build pullouts in there, Mrs. Ford. Typically, typically, that's probably an ace, that's a different situation in that case. We would probably look for a straight curb and gutter in most cases, without the bump out, bump to pull out.
Okay. And then, on the north side of the building, what, what does that look like? I just want to make sure I'm looking at the, in terms of your, let's say, this, this one here, what, which one would I be looking at that would be facing the north?
I need to come up and look at that. I didn't bring that page with me. But if you looked at this, this is a view from the northeast corner, so this is what you're looking at along... looking at along the north side. Again, when we, when we were at Planning Commission, that had balconies down that entire side, and now we can, as stated, we moved those to the interior, and the end units are both kind of on, sitting right on the corner of the, the residences. If I came up there, I could tell you which one.
Sure, go ahead, if it's okay.
You may approach.
Mayor?
It's the way we do it in the courtroom.
Okay. So, the balconies that are now going over the garages, is that what, what's going to happen now?
Yes.
Okay. And just one question on, on the, in terms of the windows in this photograph, are they within, are they going to be higher than a person, or will people be actually looking, you know, standing in front of windows and looking out?
The windows, you would be able to look out. There are also, there are certain heights and widths for egress, in case of an emergency situation, fire situation.
Okay. And I don't thi, I don't know if the person is still here who made a comment about City Council looking at the actual site, but I want to encourage the audience that many of us on City Council do go to the actual sites and look at them. So, we, we do get a good sense of, of the area. So, I wanted to confirm that.
Okay, a couple of questions I've got. You know, I, I know it's preliminary, but what kind of price point are we looking at?
I'm going to defer to one of them. I'm obviously not the price person.
We are somewhere in the neighborhood right now. We're still modeling it, but we're somewhere in the neighborhood, probably around 475,000. So...
Okay.
That can, and that can fluctuate as well. And one of the things that we deal with, even in the time that we've been in the submittal process, is dealing with variables such as appreciation, build costs, whatever the market forces are doing. So, we tend to look at the project at the beginning, usually at a midpoint, and then analyze it again at the end.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I think the rest of my questions have been addressed as part of the process, and the other questions that were being asked by council. I see no other, see no other lights on. Yes, of course.
But what's the average size of the unit? Because according to this, it says building one's 3895, and if I divide that by seven, or excuse me, five, it's 779 square feet, or...
That's a building footprint, so that's a lot coverage. So, you, you have to multiply that by three stories?
Okay, that's a footprint. Okay, so it could be 1,400?
So, gotta, gotta do a little quick math in my head here. Roughly 17, a little bit north of 1,700 square feet per unit.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll open it up for council discussion or motion.
I'm waiting for someone to...
I will make a motion, so we can get this going here. I move that Councilville 17-017, an ordinance rezoning certain lands within the city of Arvada Old Town Commons Townhomes. From the city of Arvada, RM residential multifamily to PUDR Planned Unit Development Residential, 23.3 dwelling units per acre, and amending the official zoning maps of the city of Arvada, Colorado, 5417 and 5421 Allison Street, be approved on final reading number 4598, and ordered published by title only. This is, motion is based on the finding of facts adopted by the Planning Commission. But we also have conditions too, right? I, I have no idea which conditions. We're going off of all of them. So, both the amended, that's, so both...
Well, it's, it's obviously up to you, but the Planning Commission recommendations, recommended, recommended conditions, and the conditions contained in the memo to City Council.
Including the conditions from the Planning Commission, as well as the memo provided within the packet for this rezoning. The, you want to know what the conditions are?
Yeah.
They're kind of scattered in here. Let me pull them up. We're voting on it, and we study our homework, and they're in there, so...
If you wish, Bob, I have them right close at hand.
Do you have them for you? Yeah, if you don't mind.
There are three additional, the balconies, relocation of the balconies to face the interior, and the front and rear yard areas. The second is the landscape buffer provided along the northern property line, adjacent to the existing single-family detached, landscape buffer has been provided along the northern property line. And the third one is the overall height of the building has been reduced.
And so, that's the memo included, and then...
Those are the three from the memo.
Yeah, and then the Planning Commission also had, let me pull them up.
The three from the...
Want to make sure they're on the right, right?
Yes.
The preliminary plat has additional...
And they're on page five of the...
Yeah, those are on the next motion. Okay?
Yes, okay.
Okay, so it's just the, the memo that was given. I don't see any additional on, on the rezoning. On the preliminary plat, there is
Right.
additional. So, that's the motion, if that wasn't the longest thing I've ever done.
Here we have a motion for approval. Mr. Marriott, you wish to speak to the motion?
I do, thank you. I'd like to make a couple of comments. So, start off by talking to the development team. Appreciate all the work you've done in trying to make this very small, very difficult site work, and particularly, all the, the big changes you've been willing to make to try to make it fit. Things like relocating balconies and whatnot are not small things. And particularly, the difficulties of, you know, in the street dedication that you have to give is a pretty large percentage of the, of the, of the property to start off with. But I'll acknowledge, this is a really small, difficult property. It's got some, some, kind of some unique things to it. You know, the water line is one, the storm drainage from the property to the west is another one, just its size is another one. And it's created you some problems. Couple of those are, you know, the front setback, and I have a huge problem with the setback, and I think you've tried to address it. The fact that now this will sit closer to the street than the rest of the buildings up and down the street gives me a little bit of pause. However, it does kind of match the other side of the street, so maybe that's not such a big deal. I wouldn't say that's one of my biggest issues. I think also, you've done a really good job trying to address the set, the north side, from a setback and a moving balconies and eight-foot fence versus six-foot fence and landscape. And, you know, you've, you've been more than willing to change your plans there, although I think that side probably affects the, the neighboring property the most. I have bigger concerns probably with two other things. One is the parking. Maybe it's just the, the necessary, or, or the concerns that happen with such a small site. But this is a reduction in the required parking, only maybe by one, one space. But when you have 10 units, and there's only four spaces that aren't in garages, that means out of 10 units, nobody can have a teenager who's driving, and two parents who drive, or nobody can have a work vehicle, or only a few people can have somebody over at any one time, whether that's a, a visitor visiting for multiple days, or just, just visitors coming at any one time. Again, because of this small lot, I think it doesn't afford even any parallel parking opportunities along Allison Street. And I think it, it's, it's one of the things that causes this development to directly impact the stuff around them. You know, most of the other impacts kind of are shared between this development and somebody around. But I think it, I think the parking, you know, definitely impacts everybody else. But my biggest concern is probably lot coverage, because this is where we're really talking about a big deviation from what is required. Again, I don't want to get too deep into math, but, you know, it looks like you're asking for about 7,700 square feet of lot coverage. By my calculations, you're, you would be allowed somewhere between, you know, at 25%, you might be allowed, you know, only 4,600 square feet. But you're asking for 7,700 square feet. And at 30% lot coverage, you might be allowed, you know, 5,500 square feet. It's a big change from what's required. It's not just a small change, like maybe one parking space is, or several feet of front setback, or even potentially the side setback. And so, you know, that's probably the one I just can't get over. I think it's just, I think one of the people who testified kind of said it, it's kind of too many units on too small of a lot. And man, I can sympathize with all the problems you have with it, but the maximum amount of density is not a right, it's a possibility. And some of the constraints from water lines and drainages and, and different things, requirement to line up the driveway with the street, those are all difficulties that might just make these lots not appropriate for the maximum number of units. I think you do have options, though. I think if you were to trim maybe only even one unit, but, but maybe two units, you probably can either meet all these, or get, or meet most of them and get very close to other ones. And so, for those reasons, I am going to not be supporting this motion. I, I wish you well, and I hope, I hope you can come up with something that works. But as is currently before us, I can't support it.
Mr. Jones?
So, yeah, again, I'll echo some of the things that Mr. Marriott said, and appreciate the fact that the applicant has made many concessions over the course of time, trying to ensure that their project could fit into this particular location. As I went out and sat there and walked the, the properties on the street, and walked off my own steps, and so on and so forth, you know, again, I, I share some of the same concerns from a lot coverage perspective that, that Mr. Marriott has. And feel like, you know, again, this area is zoned for multifamily, the, whatever the zoning is, the RM, to Mr. McGough's question. And as you look around the area, at least on the same side of the street, you see apartment complexes that have 21 units, but they're laid out differently with parking and, and street access. You have duplexes to the, to the backside that kind of surround this area. And so, the, the fit and form of this particular project on this particular pe, these two particular pieces of land don't fit. And so, I would agree with Mr. Marriott that there could be some changes, and it, it, it should be developed. And I believe that what you do is great work, and probably could develop this differently to fit the requirements, given the constraints that have been placed on you. And my hope is that you'll consider that as you, as you look into the future on this property. But for the simple fact that I believe that it doesn't fit, and it, in my opinion, the rezoning isn't compatible with the existing area, I can't support this either.
Mr. Pfeifer?
I also echo what my peers are saying up here in regards to the lot size. I just, I can't see that fitting. And I know that we're talking about higher density, and usually that's within a half mile of any station. This is more than a half mile to the station. As a crow flies, I just measured it. It's 3,573 feet, which is more than a half mile. And so, you know, I questioned the compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. And so, I, I too, with, you know, trying to cram in too much or shoehorning this in to make it work. And I think if you reduced it a little bit, or something different like that, that might work. But as I see it, trying to get 10 units in a .4 acre lot, .426 acre lot is, seems too much. I mean, that's as big as my single-family house lot almost. So, I mean, that, that just doesn't seem like you can put 10 units in. And also, the parking, I struggle with this. And if, if, if you've seen any of these townhouse hearings, I will always bring up two things. One is parking, and one about storing your stuff in a garage. It's just, we should probably just put that with the staff moving forward, just to make sure it happens. Because I, those are going to be two things. We know factually based that every time folks move into these, the parking situation just explodes, and we become more of a, not a quality of life anymore, and it's way overcrowded in those, those situations. But because of the compatibility and RM, and I, I'm not convinced that the zoning needs to change, therefore, I will not be supporting the motion for rezoning either.
Mr. McGough?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While this development may not be fully compatible with the single-family residents to the north, I consider, I find it to be compatible with the zoning of the property to the north, and to the areas, to the buildings surrounding it, and the areas in transition. There will be more multifamily residences there. The developer has agreed to comply with several conditions of approval put forth by the Planning Commission, and has added three additional conditions to which they will be, have agreed to be held. However, it does come down to the, the number of units on the small lot, and I, I, that's where I, I have struggled, and have come to the conclusion that this, it's too many. It turns out to be too many units for the size lot. The constraints of the property were not something that were imposed after the initial contact with the city. These were conditions that are, would be there for any developer. The placement of the, the drainage line, the placement of the water line, those were, were known at the time. And so, I have come to the conclusion that although there are many positive things about this, and the fact that it's in compliance with the, in sync with the comprehensive plan, it's still too many units for the size of the, of the lot, and I won't be supporting the motion.
I, you know, I always struggle with these, because yes, we have a comprehensive plan that speaks to trying to have higher density in, in certain areas, and this is certainly an area that justifies higher density. I'll tell you, what killed it for me was the price point. I'm, I'm looking at trying to get attainable housing, and this is not attainable housing. And, you know, I think that when I'm looking at multifamily product in this part of town, I'd, I'd really like to see an opportunity taken for a less expensive product to, to give me some justification for approving it because of the, the bulk plane issues and the, and the lot coverage issues. And because, you know, we're looking at a, at a project that's going to be, you know, not what can be defined as attainable housing, I can't budge on what our lot coverages and our bulk plane requirements are. So, I can't support the motion either. So, with that, people, if you'll vote, a yes vote would be to approve the rezoning. A no vote would be to deny the rezoning. All votes are cast, and that motion fails six to one, with Mr. Allard voting yes, all other council members voting no. Based upon that, Mr. City Attorney, do we need to address the second motion?
Please.
All right, you want me to go and make the motion, Mayor?
You may.
I move that Old Town Commons Town Home Preliminary Development Plan, 5417 and 5421 Allison Street, should I say, be rejected?
Yep.
Be rejected.
Okay, so the vote on this would be a yes vote is...
Okay, so the vote on this would be a yes vote is to reject the preliminary development plan. All votes are cast. That motion passes six to one with Mr. Allard voting no. I've got a couple of comments here before we move on. You know, I do appreciate the applicant's attempt to work with the neighborhood. I think we're just dealing with a site that is very, very difficult. And even though they did things like move the balconies to the interior, which frankly make them, I think, less marketable, the balconies, you know, why you would want a balcony overlooking the garages and the drive doesn't make it very attractive. And I'm troubled somewhat by some comments from council that made it sound like they thought that staff was creating barriers or creating problems here. Staff is simply doing what we have directed them to do with regard to the comprehensive plan. And so, you know, while the staff may have recommended approval, they were relying upon what we've said in the past in terms of what we want to see in terms of policy decisions and why what was being presented to us met what they believed to understand in terms of what we would have liked to have seen. So I think statements that, you know, why did staff make this more difficult are misplaced. So with that, Mr. Allard, you had a comment as well?
Well, it bothers me a little bit that we've spent all the time and money developing the land development code and the comprehensive plan. We've got a professional staff who reviews all these applications, see if they comply. And by the way, this one does substantially comply. Planning and zoning voted to recommend approval and then it seems to me that it's contrary to our operations that we set and try to develop the property for the property owner. I think, I think we all got to realize that most vacant property in Arvada sooner or later will be, will be developed. The purpose of the comprehensive plan and all of our various codes pertaining to all the things that people need to live in this community is to tell a developer or owner of vacant land, if you develop these rules affect you. And then for us to set and kind of say, well, maybe the rules shouldn't be that way or maybe we ought to change them. So that's my rationale for voting for the approval list.
I appreciate that. I think if it weren't a rezoning, it would have been maybe a different discussion. Mr. Pfeiffer?
Sorry, Mr. Allard, but I completely disagree with you. I think we're elected to make sure we are good stewards of our city. We can look at a plan and hope what the future is, but there are so many changing conditions year over year that we have to be stewards of our city and protect the quality of life that is expected of us. And I just simply disagree with your comments. I don't believe it met the criteria as stated, so.
Well, I didn't mean my comments to start an argument.
Fair enough. Okay, back to, we've completed our public hearings for tonight. Public comment? Anyone wish to address council at this time? Mr. Senzio?
Yeah, my name is Ken DeJaco, and I live at 12630 West 66th Place in Arvada. I just wanted to give you a continued update on the Reno design guidelines. I want to thank, first of all, John and Nancy for participating in the meeting that I think was in the end of June, June 29. Just wanted to bring a couple of things to light here. One of the things we focused on was the priority guidelines versus advisory. That was a big part of the discussion and it was a very, I think it was a very healthy meeting and it was actually a very excellent meeting, one of the best ones that I participated in as far as the back and forth with the guideline writer, Norrie Winters group and us and staff and everything. And I just want to compliment you on that. Just to highlight some of the things that were discussed, we obviously talked about property rights issues, face of garage setbacks, 20-foot setback of a two-story structure behind the face of the building, demolition issues with regard to some of the historic structures, minimum porch requirements. We actually suggested some dimensions on those, which was, I think, a big plus and a big landmark for the guidelines. Preserving the overall historical context and scale, solar and light issues, and the power of authority. One of the things we discussed was the power of authority over the design guidelines and the board of adjustments and in the future what would happen, you know, when issues were raised. And then lastly on that was mass and scale. I just wanted to focus real quick on one thing that we talked about that's kind of the elephant in the room for me and many others is the demolition issue. And I brought it up last time that I talked before you a couple of weeks ago, a few weeks ago. I believe it's incumbent on the council to investigate alternatives to demolition. In other words, the ability to demolish any one of those 85 structures is going to basically nullify the whole design guidelines, the design process, the money that we spent, the Colorado Historical Fund. They're just going to be a paperweight. If anybody can go in there with no disincentives and no incentives to keep a historic structure, then what did we go through, all that heartache and all the detailed information as far as additions and new construction? Because they're going to demolish many, many of those structures, let's face it, as time moves forward. So I would encourage you to create, you know, look into creating incentives and disincentives for demolition. And then, of course, this is the hard route. That's going to be the hard route because we know it's going to be more money for staff. It's going to be more money for the planning staff. It's going to, I mean, more time and more money, you know, for you, for everybody to try to understand this, to try to come up with other alternative schemes and maybe research other communities that have done this. But I direct, you know, I direct staff to, I would hope that maybe, and I implore you, to direct staff to provide you this information prior to the meeting. Give them some direction and say, okay, you know, based on what Mr. DeJaco was saying, you know, what are some of the alternatives to, you know, that we could build into these guidelines, build into the land development code so that we can't, so that we don't, you know, see that a majority of these buildings demolished. And be proactive in this process of acquiring this knowledge, you know, for us, the citizens. Let me see what else I had, just a couple more. And then, you know, another thing is, you know, I implore you to understand the property rights issues. Because I think that what happens when we in America and we talk about property rights issues, we always talk about the person that's changing the property right, changing a property and making it bigger, larger. They never come in and try to make something smaller. I mean, it just doesn't happen. So, you know, we're always discussing, you know, the property rights issue against the behemoth that's going to be put next door to us and that we seem to give priority to the person that's actually going to build the bigger house and with the larger footprint. And then I would encourage you to somehow see in staff, I'm not sure if this can happen, but build into, if we do end up approving the design guidelines, you know, as they are, as they modified in the future, if we could build in a follow-up review of the guidelines at a certain, a date certain in the future, that they could be reviewed and see that, you know, they're working properly and that they're intending, doing what they are intended to do. Thank you.
When does that come before us? It's the?
August 14.
August 14.
Okay.
Workshop.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comment? We got to close the public comment portion. Council, any reports?
Yes, Mayor, I have one. We are losing several members of the Arvada Sustainability Committee, and I'd like to move to appoint two new members. Keegan Conley to the Arvada Sustainability Committee for an unexpired term ending April 30, 2018, and appoint Susan Bennett to the Arvada Sustainability Committee for an unexpired term ending April 30 of 2019.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Are these people who were, who had applied during our applications for boards and commissions back in December who were on the list?
They are.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion for those two appointments. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. Anything else, Ms. Ford?
Well, I'll just mention that we had a very good meeting, the Sustainability Committee at this past Wednesday. One of the things that we did was go to sustainability recycling. And it seems like the more I go there, the more they seem to recycle in terms of difficult items. And it's a wonderful place. And I've said this before, I think it's a great model. They use people with disabilities who are learning job skills and who are very good at what they do according to the owner. And they're growing, but they're going to be growing out of space pretty soon. They're just expanding. And hopefully we won't have any changes to the Medicaid laws that would hinder that type of a business model.
Mr. Marriott?
Yeah, just real quick, we got a presentation on this earlier about the report from the audit committee. And I just wanted to reiterate, thank you to the staff for not, for doing such a good job on the audit, but for doing such a good job that the audit didn't find anything. And also, I know we all received an electronic copy of it, but I have a hard copy of the report. If any of you would like it, you're welcome to it.
Good. Mr. Jones?
For anyone who would like to learn more information about the Jefferson Parkway, there will be an open house this coming Tuesday, not tomorrow, but a week from tomorrow, July 25 from 6 to 8 p.m. at Ralston Valley High School. If you'd like to view Parkway milestones, maps, or other information, you can go to arvada.org/explore/transportation. So please come.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
So the Arvada on tap is this weekend. Are you, I was looking at you, Devin, are you going to be there?
Of course, Mayor Protem Pfeiffer. I'm volunteering the entire day.
Well, I was just picturing you carrying those buckets and pumping iron because he did that all the time.
I gotta work out a couple of days in advance.
We got you a go-kart to drive around anyways this time. But it is this weekend. It's a barbecue competition and brew. It's a great festival. It does profit support local service clubs. And so it would be nice to have everyone out there again. And I think, Mayor, you're gone, so I guess I will be announcing the winners.
That's correct.
At 4 o'clock. So I hope to see everyone there and please come out and have some fun.
Very good. Any other council reports?
I had the pleasure, you know, anytime we can report upon great events at the Arvada Center, it's nice to do. Three Dog Night was phenomenal Friday night. Oh my, oh my goodness. All of us baby boomers rocking away to Three Dog Night was pretty fun to watch in and of itself. But the show was great. I applaud the staff there for, you know, reaching out and doing a wide variety of types of shows for all types of audiences. And it was a great, great evening.
And that was sold out.
It was sold out.
Oh, yes.
Good, good. Mr. Devin?
Yes, real briefly, next week, next Monday, we'll be reviewing the hospitality master plan and then our 10-year financial plan and 10-year CIP as part of the 2018 budget update. And I would also like to mention, and I appreciate the council discussion tonight, on October 10, I'm sorry, October 9 is when we will be having a joint workshop with the planning commission on the land development code update. I think this, I think the discussion here tonight regarding this particular project and others like this demonstrate the need for us to really, 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 really work hard to focus between staff, council, and planning commission on how we need to update the land development code so we can all get on the same page and work better with the development community around. Because there's going to be more of these very challenging and difficult projects as, all over our community. And I think this is, this gives us an opportunity to really try to work hard on getting on the same page. So I'm looking forward to that and I hope all of you are as well.
Good, thank you. Nothing from the city attorney. We stand adjourned.